All right, I'd like to call this Tuesday, July 22, Town Council Workshop to Order. What a crowd. We've probably the most we've ever had for a workshop. But there's a lot of good information today, so I think that's brought the people out. We're going to start with employee recognition. Jeremy, I think you have one?
Mayor, Town Council, good morning. I would like to recognize Gloria Abbott, if I may.
She wasn't sure.
Gloria started off as a research fellow with the town while she was obtaining her master's degree in public administration. She, a position was open when she finished her degree and she has some options, but she wanted to come work for the Town of Carolina Beach as the town planner. She quickly was promoted to senior planner. And while she's been here, she has obtained her state certified zoning official and also National Flood Plane Manager certification. And in the fall, she will be obtaining her, going to the School of Government to get supervisory training, supervisory. So, I would like to, if you'll join me, just to congratulate Gloria on her five years of service with the Town of Carolina Beach.
Thank you, Gloria.
Thank you, Gloria.
Bruce, you got one? Oh, he can't do it with one arm. Listen, if you hurt that shoulder, if you hurt that shoulder, we're going to be mad.
He's got to be able to shake his hand with the right hand. Mayor and council, about early 2000s, over 20 years ago, this young man came to Carolina Beach looking for some tasty waves and a fellowship. He was a grad student at UNCW, and I believe Jeremy may have a picture of them from about 20 years ago.
Oh, we gotta have a picture. That's dead?
Thanks to AI, we have created them 20 years ago. No, but seriously, Ed has been, Ed has been a rock for the Town of Carolina Beach. I think he holds the North Carolina record for most times as interim town manager. Hopefully, we put an end to that, so you don't have to do that ever again. But Ed is, like I said, has been a rock for this town. He's provided strong ethical, honest leadership. He's been a great colleague to employees here. He's been a great teammate and a great friend, and he means a lot to this organization. He's been dedicated to this town and to council and to the organization. So, I want to congratulate Ed on 20 years.
Awesome. By the way, that is not Ed's daily dress attire.
He came prepared.
I'd also like to point out, that picture's funny, but that actually is what Jeremy Hardison looked like.
That was probably Jeremy's hair, wasn't it?
So, just for those that don't know, Ed also just retired from the Coast Guard with 20?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven years, just retired. So, congratulations on that again as well. Okay, next up will be a presentation by the Army Corps of Engineers on wetland permitting.
Good morning. My name is Brad Shaver.
Brad, can you pull that mic just a little bit closer to you, so the people at home can hear? There you go.
I'm not used to having to talk into a microphone, so.
Is that on? Can you guys hear him?
Can you?
Okay. We can hear you fine. I just want to make sure the people at home can hear you.
I didn't know that was going to be putting it on, because I thought.
Oh, no, you're going to be a star now, buddy.
My name is Brad Shaver. I'm with the Army Corps of Engineers. I'm in the Wilmington Field Office. I've been in that office now for 21 years this year. Prior to that, I was with the North Carolina Division of Coastal Management for three years, and prior to that, three years with the North Carolina Division of Water Resources. So, I've been a lifelong regulator. So, I appreciate you guys showing an interest in this, in our program. Appreciate you learning, wanting, and willing to learn more about it. I think the more you know about it, the better off we all are, because there's a lot of things out there that people, you know, people say the Corps does, and some we do and some we don't. So, I appreciate your interest in this. Just a little bit of a, just a hierarchy or the large-scale look at the Corps. We do, the Wilmington District is responsible for all of North Carolina. Their, the Corps of Engineers has a regulatory side of the branch, which is what I'm in. We also have an operations side of the branch, which you're more familiar with, with like snowscut, intercoastal waterway, that kind of opportunities. The regulatory side has field offices across the state. The Wilmington District is housed in Wilmington. I just happen to be in the Wilmington Field Office housed within the Wilmington District. We do have an office in Washington. We have one in Charlotte, Raleigh, and Asheville. So, just to kind of give a breakdown. In my office, I answer to the Wilmington Field Office Chief, who answers to the Division Chief, who's the chief over the entire state. He in turn answers to the Colonel, Colonel Morgan in the Wilmington District. Real quickly, the two authorities that the regulatory program operates under is Section 10 of the Rivers and Harbors Act, which is more of the navigation-based kind of activities. And we also operate under the Section 404 of the Clean Water Act, which is more of the activities regarding the discharge of film material into wetlands and streams. Just briefly, Section 10, again, discusses the regulates activities that affect the course, location, and navigable capacity of the watershed, prohibits unauthorized obstruction and alterations, and does work within the dredging docks and pilings marina. Typically, the Corps works in concert with the Division of Coastal Management on projects such as these. They are the lead point of contact, so all the applications generally go through them. In a lot, in a lot of cases, we have general permits that dovetail to the state's program, so their activities are taken on with, we don't even have to take action. But those other actions that don't fit those general permits, then we will take individual action in concert with the Division of Coastal Management. Section 404 of the Clean Water Act regulates all the waters of the United States, including wetlands. We regulate the discharge of film material into those areas. So, that's one of the things I want to appreciate talking about today. What do we regulate? We regulate discharge film material. So, if you bring in dump loads of trucks, truckload to dump of film material put into the site, that's, that's a discharge. We don't regulate tree clearing. We don't regulate mowing. You regulate mechanized land clearing, which it takes a step further when you mechanize land clearing, you actually do displace material from point A to point B. That's like grind next, like pulling stumps up, you know, pushing the stumps back in or filling the stumps back in. But general, like land clearing, it does not do any root disturbance, we don't regulate that either. So, we only regulate the discharge of film material. It's basically that, those activities that are kind of pushing material into a wetland and trying to create an upland out of it. So, I just want to make sure that's clear, because that's something that's not all the time understood. You have questions along the way, feel free to ask.
Actually, if you can just repeat exactly what you just said about what you don't regulate.
Well, the Corps only regulates the discharge of film material in wetlands. We do not regulate tree clearing. We do not regulate mowing. There are certain areas in the county that we would regulate that, but those were typically associated with mitigation conditions that were, that were negotiated during a permit. Sometimes, previously, we would have maybe some preservation associated with a subdivision. That's a little different. But generally speaking, the Corps only regulates the discharge of film material. Mechanized land clearing, again, is that clear, clearing with heavy equipment that usually displaces material from, from one place to the other. That's, that's considered a discharge. If you were to go into a seasonally dry wetland with heavy equipment and you don't have any rutting or displacement of material, that is not a discharge of film material. The Corps would not regulate that.
And Brad, would that be for a point on the map that is already designated as Corps wetland?
That's correct. We only regulate the discharge of film material in jurisdictional wetlands.
And I guess that's a question I'll wait till the end. Something to think about. When is it, when does, when does a parcel of land or a strip of the forest become designated wetland? Is it like a review, or it was before and now it isn't? I mean?
Yeah, I think we'll get into that just. So, here's what we'll get into right now. So, in geographic definition, Carolina Beach, the Corps regulates wetland waters of the US and non-wetland waters of the US. The distinction between those are, the wetland waters of the US are those areas that have the three parameters to be a wetland. It has the hydro soils, the hydrology, and hydrophytic vegetation. You've got to have all three in order to be a wetland, okay? The non-wetland waters would include jurisdictional ditches, jurisdictional streams, jurisdictional open water bodies such as the lake, that have downstream connections. Taking a step further, and here gets to your point. So, you identify what the wetlands are, or the waters of the US are first. Do this, does, does an area have the three parameters to be a wetland? If the answer is yes, it's a wetland. Does the area have an ordinary high watermark to be a non-wetland water, which is those are the streams or the open waters? You define those first, and then you have to kind of figure out, you have to put the bureaucratic test to it, which is those, those decisions that usually come from Supreme Court decisions as we have now. And those decisions are, right now, wetlands are jurisdictional if they are adjacent to relatively permanent waters such as streams or ditches that have an ordinary watermark, and that have downstream connections.
And an outlet.
And an outlet, correct. Now, previously, before the most recent SACA decision, those, that, that definition of adjacency was broader. In the Town of Carolina Beach, we, that was defined as if you had a wetland that was adjacent to a traditional navigable water, say the Atlantic Ocean, within the hundred-year floodplain, just the fact that it was in that area, it was considered to be adjacent to the T and W. That was now since been removed by the SACA decision from Supreme Court. That, now you have to have basically an all essence of wetland touching a stream or a ditch that flows further downstream.
So, I've got a question. My kind of tells on what Joe said earlier. So, if you have a wetland that was designated 20 years ago, can that change?
Yeah, so every time the rule changes, the jurisdictional decisions change. The only way those decisions are made, they're made by the Corps of Engineers. You know, there is no magic map out there that shows all where the wetlands are. There are maps, there are tools. On your website, you have GIS layers that give you ideas of where the wetlands may be, but those are just tools. So, those are like flags saying, okay, if I'm in this area, I need to go to the Corps to see if in fact these are wetlands that are jurisdictional wetlands. They could be wetlands, but they may not be jurisdictional. You have to get to that bureaucratic test. So, yes, they do change with rules change. Every time a rule changes, sometimes those, those decisions might have to be revisited from year to year, depending on how quickly the rules change. And I can tell you lately, they've changed a lot, which is very frustrating for our organization as well.
So, Brad, can I test, I just want to make sure I understand. So, before this decision, I'm not familiar with this decision, but before that, if I had a low area, marshy area, whatever, I don't know what the proper technical terms are, that may have been a wetland before, but it doesn't, it's not adjacent or doesn't flow anywhere, what you're telling me that now is not a wetland, is that?
I'm telling you it's a wetland. It's not a jurisdictional wetland.
Okay, okay.
That's the distinction, so.
So, it doesn't meet the, that particular requirement?
It meets the three parameters we discussed, hydro soils, vegetation, and soils, but it doesn't get past the bureaucratic test as to what is written and codified in law, as to what's a jurisdictional wetland.
Okay, gotcha.
And so, that, that has been a moving target. It's been very frustrating for the past five or six years. It's moved a lot, and it seems to, every challenge of administration changes and changes again. And I will tell you that right now, the rules we're working on, they're being redefined as we speak. So, it could be about the end of this year, the beginning of next year, it's going to be redefined yet again. So, let's just talk about wetlands, though. What do, what do wetlands do? I mean, wetlands, they do provide storm storage, nutrient reductions, receiving waters, aquifer recharge, erosion control, and wildland habitat. And I point this out to say that all wetlands do this, not just jurisdictional wetlands, okay? So, the state of North Carolina, a few years ago, did actually regulate non- jurisdictional wetlands. They no longer, they fall in suit with what the federal government does. But, all those wetlands do, do, do provide, you know, similar functions. I just wanted to point out that this is from an EPA document that about one acre wetland, depending on the confining layer, meaning how far down does a soil hit, before it hits like a layer where it runs across below the land surface, it can hold between 330,000 and 1.5 million gallons of water per acre. That's kind of a big deal, especially in a town where, you know, I know you're struggling with some of the stormwater issues. So, that's, the Corps' first function is to help identify whether, which wetlands are jurisdictional wetlands. But the Corps is actually a permitting agency. We're not a conservation group, and that's another misnomer. We are here to, if this was going to be a protection program, it would have been left with an End Up Environmental Protection Agency. But it was handed out to the Corps of Engineers as the permitting authority. We have three different types of permits that we routinely work with. Regional general permits I looked to earlier, those are the ones that kind of fall dovetail with the coastal management, like Section 10 work for navigable waters, marinas, docks, dredgings, such as that. We have nationwide permits that are just as applicable here in North Carolina as they are in California. They're meant to cover activities that are deemed to be minimal in impacts. Currently, that definition is basically a half acre of waters of the US lost or less. When a project steps outside of that, the, the, the big difference between nationwide permits, individual permits, nationwide permits that have already actually gone through the National Environmental Policy Act, NIPA, so the NIPA's already been completed. When you step outside of the nationwide permits, you're in a standard permit, the NIPA has to be done individually. And as part of that routine, we have to go through historic properties. We have to go through endangered species. We have to get a Coastal Zone Management Act permit. We have to get a 401 water quality certification from the state. All those activities that are already done under the nationwide permits haven't been done under the individual permit, so it just, it elevates the review to a little bit more rigorous process. And again, those are for permits greater than a half acre. You know, our permit evaluation, it's, it's not, here's your project, and we'll figure out how to do mitigation. We actually have the project come in, you explain what's your purpose and do you the project. You, you tell us, how have you tried to avoid impacts of the wetlands? If you can't avoid the impacts of the wetlands, you tell us, how have you tried to minimize the impacts of those wetlands? Have you used engineering techniques, bulkheads, steeper slopes, other types of engineering ideas to minimize your impacts? And once you get to that step, you come up with at least environmentally damaging practical alternative, or basically, what's the wetland impact you cannot avoid, and that's considered to be what we would permit. That, only when we get to that point is when we discover, or we discuss what's mitigation, or what's appropriate mitigation for that loss of wetlands. So, you don't go straight to mitigation, you have to go into these sequential steps. When the Corps is there to kind of balance, again, the property rights, as well as the environmental stewardship, we have to find that balance. I mean, the way I tell people I'm doing a good job, if I get a one phone call and it says, how dare you regulate me, and I hang it up, and the next person says, how dare you, you don't regulate more, I feel like I'm doing a pretty good job in terms of balance, and it happens often, so.
To earn a permit, just as we do here for a conditional permitting zone in activity that's allowed through conditional permitting as opposed to buy right, is there an exchange of conditions, will issue the permit if you do X to apply a solution to, I don't know, retain or, you know, preserve on that property itself?
Yes, sir. The, the, the three end results after you get to the permit process, either issue the permit, issue the permit with conditions, or deny the permit. Now, I'll be honest with you, the Corps only denies about 2% of the permits per year nationwide.
Kind of in a way that, like we would do, because we do, we could do an exchange of conditions with a development plan, if it's a conditional permit, if it's a, if it's an activity allowed in that particular zone but requires a hearing. I wonder if there's any redundancy in that.
Well, and you bring up a good point. Now, keep in mind, I like to describe the Corps' program as the top of the funnel, okay? We're not a protection agency. So, you know, the state can be more restrictive. You guys can be further restrictive, you know, if you have a different vision for your town. So, if that's just it, we're the top of the funnel, and as it's going through there, it's being redefined, and you're right, what comes in as a permit action for the Corps may not come out the bottom of that funnel once you go through all the other reviews, so.
Brad, what was the 2%? I missed the 2% comment.
The Corps, on average, denies about 2% of the permit applications per year nationwide.
I'm amazed by that.
Well, it's because they're not conservation, right? They're just, they're just making sure it meets the law.
But remember, so a lot of, most, most folks are going to be willing to come to us and say, okay, if we have conditions, we want to put this condition, or we want to put this mitigation condition, or we want this, this item in the permit. That's a negotiation. We work back and forth. We try our best to work with the applicants.
So, the comment down here, the Corps must balance property rights with environmental impacts. Does one have more weight than the other?
No, sir. We're neither, for any project coming to the door, now they're, are project proponents or opponents. That's, that's very clear in our program.
Gotcha.
As to how we should operate.
That's a good answer.
So, you guys, Ed had provided some questions that maybe you just dispersed some further discussion, and, and just had an opportunity to sit down and kind of give you some answers to those questions. One of them was how long the program has been around, and have the rules recently changed? We heard about that today. Yes, they've recently changed in terms of jurisdictional status. Permitting, permitting wise, our rules really haven't changed much over the years, but the program's been around since 1972. Rivers and Harbors Act has been around since 1899. It's a bit, a bit further. Does the program protect wetlands on different-sized properties? I'm not exactly sure if I understood that question, but I just wanted to point out that the Corps, you know, is a permit program, not a protection program, and it regulates to regulate, not protect necessarily the wetlands. This, again, comes in the form of balancing the property rights and environmental stewardship, we discussed. So, if you have a, if that didn't answer that question or if you need further clarification, let me know.
Well, I think you did, a part of that question was around size, and you said there are different levels of review for if it's under half acre. Was it half acre?
Right. That's, that's correct.
Right.
So, if it's considered minimal impact, less than a half acre of impact. That has nothing to do with the property's size, but the, yeah, you're right, the impact.
The wetland size.
The impact size is different, correct.
Right, okay.
Does the program do anything to mitigate potential issues with adjacent property areas? Now, again, the nationwide permits are considered minimal. There's not a lot of public outreach that goes on to those, because they are considered to be just garden variety projects that we should be able to push out the door pretty easily with, with minimal conditions. If it does get into the individual standard permit condition, we do have a public notice process. It does go out to the adjacent propaganders, local media, local townships, where we're trying to solicit in a town that knows better than we do what the issues are, what are the issues, so that we can in turn take those issues and challenge the person who's asking for the permit to address those issues. We're not engineers, we're biologists. So, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll use as much expertise as we have, and, but if something came, comes about that we're not sure of, we're going to reach out to maybe the other side of the Corps of Engineers to get some input, or just make sure we better understand the responses that we get from the applicant to the, to the issues that are raised up.
And Brad, thanks for the calls over the last several months. You and I, taking time to talk to me and flaring questions that I had for you. One discovery that I picked up, and I think you told me, was the ratio, the mitigation ratio, that's what comes to mind for the town. It seemed to be an acknowledgement of the issues we're facing, which at one point was one unit to be developed for, yeah, two units to be mitigated, preserved for a unit of development, and that expanded to four to one. Is that?
Yes, generally speaking, the Corps' program requires two units of mitigation for one unit of impact. That part of that is because oftentimes, it's not right there on the same location. It's from a bank that might be in the same hydrologic unit code, which is just basically a fancy word for watershed. So, generally speaking, our ratios do start at two to one. Back in 2019, one of my coworkers or predecessors took a challenge, and we basically up that ratio four to one, because we recognized in the Town of Carolina Beach, the wetlands are, are being lost at a pretty fast rate. And I think at the time, they were looking at, you know, just our tools, not saying this is, this is, this is within the development part. There was about 20 acres or more of wetlands kind of remaining in the town. It wasn't a lot. I'm not saying, you know, Matsu or outside the development limits, but within the, you know, the highly developed area, there was not a wetland left, and so we upped those ratios. Just to, not to discourage it, but to make people really think long and hard before they, you know, went and sought a permit.
But that didn't necessarily, the preservation of, or the four units preserved, I was going to use that word, didn't necessarily have to fall within the town, city limits.
Right, and that goes to the next question, you know, right. So, in 2008, the Environmental Protection Agency, which is, they're not the ones administering the program, but they are our mothership. They're the ones that, you know, come up with the rules. They created a 2008 mitigation rule, and that mitigation rule states that their preference for mitigation are those that come from a bank, mitigation bank. And those mitigation banks, as much as we like to be able to say they're in your town, they're, they're not, but they're, they're in your hydrologic unit code. Again, that's the fancy word for watershed. The larger the number in the, in the, in the HUP code, the, the smaller the, the is. But in your, in the Town of Carolina Beach, there's a hydrologic unit code that goes to and feeds the Cape Fear River. And so, individuals within Carolina Beach can use that, that, that bank that's been dedicated. When, when the banks are created, they, they come up what's called a service area. And through negotiations with the Corps and the proponent, they decide what that service area is and which areas can use those. And so, there is a bank that Carolina Beach residents can use. Would we prefer it to be on, on the island? Absolutely. But you can only imagine the challenges if we said, okay, no more, no more impacts on the Carolina Beach, except for when you mitigate on the island. How, I mean, where, where would the mitigation come from? You know, what, that, that would pose a pretty substantial challenge. In the state of North Carolina, we're pretty lucky to have the mitigation banks that we do. Not a lot of other states have those. And so, that's, that's the best way I know to answer that question. We would prefer it to be here. We would be, we absolutely would, but it, a small town like this, that causes a lot of, a lot of challenges, for sure.
So, let me, so if I, so if I've got two acre piece of property I want to develop, and there's a quarter acre of that is identified as wetlands, then I would just apply for that less, in other words, it wouldn't be notification of the neighbors kind of thing, no hearings, because it's under that half acre rule, right? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's, you would, you would apply for a nationwide permit.
Right, and probably be granted.
You would be, you'd be through that, you would still be taken through that same litany of decisions, that's, this is what's your purpose? Can you avoid? Can you minimize? I mean, and that, and minimization comes in all different levels. I mean, it could be elevating your structure over the wetlands.
Right.
As long as it's elevated high enough, and you still have light penetration, that may not be something that's considered an impact. So, you, you're still going to be held to the same standard, and then at the end, if, if that quarter acre is justified, if we can say yes, we've answered the questions, we feel good about our record, it can be justified, then your mitigation ratio would be four to one from this mitigation bank that services the Town of Carolina Beach.
Okay, so then that's when I have to go, that's when the mitigation bank comes in, and then I would, how does that work? Or maybe you're going to get to that. Do they pay for that prop, as a developer, what, how do they do this swap with the mitigation bank?
So, the mitigation bank is, is, again, is, it's a piece of property that formerly had wetlands. Maybe it's, maybe it was converted, simplest thing is maybe during agriculture, and like ditches were cut through it. But the soils are still in place. If you fill the ditches, you'll restore the hydrology, and these are, these are sites that are not small sites. These are sites that are, you know, could be from 50 acres to 400 acres in size. So, they identify a site, they create a mitigation banking instrument that is brokered between the Corps and the proponent. That project is constructed and is, and is monitored for seven years with very strict guidelines as to how they are considered to be successful. Once it's deemed successful, that bank is, generates credits that they can in turn sell to an individual that needs them. So, if you're a developer and you had to get mitigation credits, you go, this Corps has nothing to do with this. You go to that mitigation bank and you negotiate with them the price for those credits. That bank tells us, yes, we'll be willing to do it if, if he wants to come to us. We give him a what's called a mitigation transfer form that's part of that permit decision, and then you go pay that bank. The transfer form is signed by the, fronted by the banker, then the banker is now responsible for those, for those credit needs through his mitigation bank.
Great.
Well, may I ask, environmentally, that makes sense, okay? You're protecting more wetlands, more contiguous wetlands, and from an environmental perspective, that's good. But our concern is often flooding. Is that look, is that considered as part of this arrangement? Because our concern is that it's not about, necessarily about the frogs and the turtles. It's about if we take away our wetlands, where, where's this water going?
Well, that was the, the point of that slide, saying, here's all the things the wetlands do, and those are things that we consider as part of our decision.
But yeah, only 2% of the time, you say no.
Well, that's, again, but, but the other 98% of the time, there's going to be a really, really healthy discussion about how are these activities justified, and what conditions might go with them in order for them to get to a permit.
Yes, so their goal, what I'm hearing you say is you're, it's 98% because your goal is to, is mitigation.
Well, no, the goal is to get that balance.
The bal, that's what I mean. But your, your goal is to find a way to. The bal, that's what I mean, but your, your goal is to find a way to either through the development activity to mitigate onsite those issues, like you said, build the building up over the, whatever it may be, or a whole series of possible actions could be taken, and then in the end, it could also be mitigated by this mitigation bank essentially.
Once that, yeah, once that decision is justified, that, you know, we can agree with that least environmental damaging practical alternative, is that's when we get into the mitigation aspect.
Okay.
So, so you talked about the administrate, administrative change, and which we have, do you have any inkling of what's coming down the road?
I wish I did, because it does, it throws kinks in our, our workflows as well, so if someone goes and, you know, Jay, you have a, you have a jurisdictional wetland determination was done in 2019, you, you would feel like you could rely on that, but then when the rules change twice, and here we are having to revisit your decision, it just slows us down, so I wish I knew what that, what that was.
I understand.
I don't think it's going to be any larger, I don't think the wetlands are going to become more, there's going to be more wetlands that are jurisdictional, I mean, just based on current administration and what, where that's going. I have no opinion on that, but I don't think it's going to be where we're going to be more wetlands in the jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Just for me, just back to the mitigation, because this is the question I always ask, how does mitigating wetlands from Carolina Beach to a watershed area, how is that beneficial to the town of Carolina Beach? If we're filling in wetlands, then there's nowhere for the water to go, I don't care if it's 20 miles from here, that's a different, it's a different jurisdiction as far as where the waters, where the flooding is coming from.
I understand.
So I think that's the hardest part for myself and for residents to understand, is when you just hand out a permit to fill in wetlands and they're saying, oh, well, they mitigated it, but where'd they mitigate it to? Well, it's on the other side of the county, it's in your watershed plan, I, I think that's the hardest part to understand.
Again, I'm not saying it's ideal, and that's where I'm also suggesting, like I said, that, you know, a town, a state, they can be more restrictive than the Corps. If, if there are activities out there that need further protections, I mean, they can be more restrictive than the Corps.
So Brad, the D O T has hydrologists going to find out, we learned that through the, I didn't know that before, I'm sure others did, maybe, they have hydrologists on the staff that review sidewalk plans, and will the new, will the sidewalk do when it's placed on ditches, how do they then resolve where the stormwater goes? On the staff, along with yourself as a regulator, there are hydrologists, for instance, who study, now we're going to fill this in, what are the impacts on this parcel of land, this acre, two acres, five acres, to the, and then come back and make a recommend, that lends itself to the recommendation, or decision rather, that you would make on a application to develop.
I would, we talked about that individual permit asking, or having to have a number of underlying decisions that are made for, before we can issue the permit. I would, I would suggest that the state 401 water quality certification really drives at the stormwater issues, they are our stormwater experts in the state, so they're the ones that have that, that professional capability to tell us that, so if they're going to be willing to issue a 401 water quality certification from the state, the Corps really going to rely on them to be the experts in that, in that aspect.
But you have access to those subject matter experts?
We do, but that's not something we often, we do have subject matter experts we get into, but usually that's more, they're there if we need them, and if we don't, we have different avenues than the Corps, E R D I C, which is an experimental design branch where they do answer some of these more tricky questions, we could always reach out to E R D I C for some question if it, if it came or rose to that level, but generally speaking, we don't, usually those stormwater related questions are handled by the state.
So I have a question for Bruce or Ed or Jeremy on this, so he, he was talking about the town could enact, do, North Carolina, as we all know, is not a home rule state, right? We only are, we can only do what we're authorized to do by the state. Are we authorized to, to make, for rulemaking around wetlands, or is that, have we ever been given that authority?
I think as recently, we're not allowed to do anything more restrictive in the state in general, because it comes to stormwater.
Okay, so we couldn't have our own-
There's some, we could, there's things we can do zoning wise, you could, you could rezone something to conservation or, or something like that, but generally our rules have to be in, in line with theirs.
Okay.
And there's a lot of things that, that you adopted with your new unified development ordinance that do that too, we, we did not have a limit on how much fill you could put on a lot, now, now you are, can't put anymore than two feet of fill, we didn't have a limit on impervious area on a lot, now it's 65% is the limit, so there are things that you're, you've implemented and have started to implement, so those are, those are some of, a couple of the ones that hit my, top of my head when you said that.
Right, so we're, we're addressing the impacts of this program, but we're not necessarily-
Regulating wet.
Regulating wetlands.
Right, right.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
I mean, the city of Wilmington, I think, has a C O D, Conservation Overlay District, and I think those are prompted, or those come from the edge of wetlands over, and they have different zoning requirements for that, so I mean, there's, I mean, there's different, different ways to do it, I'm not suggesting you're going to get into the wetland permitting group, program, I mean, we, we do have a state that tried that and failed, but I'm, I'm just saying, suggesting that you do have zoning opportunities.
Yeah, I think I got it, through our zone, through our U D O, and we did, the issues that Ed brought up were big changes for us on the impervious surface and the amount of fill, which is helpful, but it's not, we're not sitting here saying you could fill that wetland or not, that's their job, that's what I'm hearing, or either the combination between them and the state, but we're not authorized to do that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because, you know, just to recap, the three conditions that you mentioned first, and then it has to have an outlet, that water that is there, that brought it to its designation in the first place, has to have an outlet to somewhere else. If that outlet is disturbed through permitting and development, our recommendations made that then get handed down to the next, you know, enforcement agent, next, the next step in a final decision on a development, which of course will come from you guys and then down to the town, right? To, all right, this is what it looked like before, here's now what placement of concrete slabs, or this is what the development's going to look like, so without the outlet, where, where does the water go? We recommend this, or this is what you're going to need to really focus on. We've given the permit, we've gone through the whole thing, our hydrologists, experts at the state that are good at that, and their recommendation for mitigation is X or Y. Does any of that get transferred down in, when a decision is made? Yes, 98% of the time, but with conditions? Do we see them, do we, is there any interaction with, so maybe on a five acre size development, is there any interaction with the town post a Corps of Engineers permit?
You have to tell me that, really. We, we, you are alerted for those type of projects and, or individual permits, as the experts that know what the issues are, we encourage you to, you know, provide input to those issues that we can in turn allow the applicants to rebut or to address in some form or fashion. I mean, we're, every time we're doing an individual permit, we're doing an environmental assessment as our decision document, and that environmental assessment's pretty thorough, I mean, it, it takes into consideration every public comment that we've given, and how it's addressed, one way or the other, so, I mean, you know.
Just I'll close with this, Brad, I know with the 10 acre development proximity that was four years ago, the state stepped in due to the size, you know, D E Q had to come in and do a review and issue a permit, one of which was stormwater, it might have been more, and I know D O T came in as well, traffic, traffic study, this, the impact would be this, and so we saw some of those, I do remember seeing some, what came out from what the state offered before it came to this council for a decision. I guess that's, that's the, I mean, that's the sort of analogy I'm trying to create, maybe not doing so, so well with the words I'm standing on. Couple of things here, going from a two to one, one unit developed, two units to preserve, to a one to four is an acknowledgement of the issues we have here, that's pretty clear. So it would seem to me, not having, I think, not having seen a development of five acres or 10 acres coming to us, maybe on the board anyway, it would seem to me that we would have some of the decisions or recommendations, conditions from other agencies at the state. Hydrology I just mentioned earlier for outlet, do we try to find a way, where does the water go? What's being preserved? And without talking about a specific case, just looking at it from size, I would be curious to see if, if we have something coming down on a development today that, that you're looking at, the, the readout from, from being at four to one, Ed, is there something that-
I, I think there's different pieces of what Brad's looking at versus, I, I think what, there is a required state stormwater permit that I think handles a lot of like-
A certain size of development, five acres, 10, is, there's a threshold somewhere.
It's a-
10,000 per feet?
Yeah, it's, it's a state stormwater permit that, so there's, there's other avenues-
That half acre?
You know, Brad's just looking at wetlands and, like, one of y'all mentioned where the flooding is, is a huge concern, you know, wetlands are too, but they're, the big issue for us is where's that water going to go?
But that's separate, that's a separate issue.
That's a separate issue, separate, you know, the town has enforcement authority, the state does, and Brad's got, I guess.
Yeah.
I think it's just what's the readout, what's the, here, the decision was made, but this is what led to the decision and recommendations or conditions that had to be met in order to get the federal agency, the Corps of Engineers permit, and then down from there. Because I think it might advise the conditions that a town, that a municipality would impose, or-
If it's conditional zoning, right, if it's conditional zoning, then all that data would come to us and we would have to consider that to make sure that those things were in place, but if it's by right, we would never see that. I think that's kind of where Joe's going.
That's right, we, we usually have those conditions that you have to meet all federal, state and local permit requirements.
If it's a by right, we're not, it's not going to come in front of us anyway.
Right.
To begin with, but is there, is there a responsibility for, well, this was a tough decision that we made at the Corps, you know, paraphrasing, of course, because of these reasons? It would be, we had, one of the conditions, we had to do X and Y, and is that enough for us? In other words, we may not see something that is, has a significant impact on an already tenuous storm, flooding, you know, predicament, or issues that we would have in, in town.
I mean, I hope you would, because you would see that, you're going to be copied on the public notice, so you would be alerted if anything greater than-
Pre-decisional or post-decision, both?
Well, pre-decisional.
Pre-decisional.
Because that's for seeking input, if you have input at that point, that's where we want to, we want to know about it, so we can try to get it addressed.
Yeah, we also want to see what the folks that are reviewing this, what their assessments were too, because if they're responsible for preserving the wetlands that, that have been designated, what, a decision to give a permit, we did so, four to one, but any commentary that comes from anybody part of that decision to issue a Corps wetlands, a wetlands designated permit to develop.
So there's-
I'm saying, I'm looking, I'm saying on the backside of a decision as opposed to, yeah, give us your input in the back, front, here's what led to our decision, here's where we came down on it.
So certainly those decisions become public record at the end when we make a decision, if you're, if you're seeking to see the, the mechanics behind that, that you would need to FOIA that, and that would have to get in our office, council, or, or, we're not, unfortunately not, like I said, agency or everything is, 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 just have to get to that FOIA process.
Anything else, Brad?
That's it.
I just have one comment, you know, whenever I have a conversation with anybody about the Corps, first of all, I don't know what the heck I'm talking about.
And that's why we're here.
Exactly right. And the fact that you came in and dissolved a lot of these misnomers is greatly appreciated, so thank you, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
I, I 100% agree, it's a complicated program, it's not, it's hard from a layman's, and I'm count, I'm counting myself in that, to understand the interaction between all these, so you taking the time to come out today and, and put some structure around it, we really appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you, Brad.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, we're going to hear from the Sunny Day Flooding Project.
All right, thanks for having us today, it's been about a year since we saw you last. I'm Dr. Catherine Anardi, I'm an assistant professor at N C State, I'm a coastal engineer.
Appreciate you all having us out, my name is Max Colley, I'm the Director of Climate Research and Engagement at the Museum of Life and Science in Durham, North Carolina.
Hi, good morning, me, Yukihino, I'm an assistant professor, and actually, I'm now an associate professor at U N C Chapel Hill in City and Regional Planning.
Hey, everyone, I'm Thomas Thelon, PhD student at N C State.
And we are the Sunny Day Flooding Project. Okay, so we come every year and we talk to you about flooding in your community. So last summer, we came and we talked about how often it was flooding in Carolina Beach and why, and we also talked about a survey that we had administered throughout the town to everybody. The survey had a lot of components, one of the components was how floods are actually impacting people on a day-to-day basis, but we also asked for ideas on how the community actually wanted to combat the flood problem. So what we told you last summer, and it was no surprise, was that it's flooding a lot in Carolina Beach, it was about 70, about 70 times, or about 60 days of flooding, and within our, our research project, we consider a flood, any amount of water on the road, and we use that definition because we're assuming that it's salt water and it might impact your car if you drive through it. So it flooded about 70 times, and we found that about a third of those floods occurred outside of our king tide events, or our highest high tide of the year, and that was due to factors like wind, wind can really push up water on the shelf and push it through our inlets and into the out basin, rain was also a factor, water just doesn't have anywhere to go here. So with that information, we, we seeded a series of workshops, and that's really what we're here to talk to you about today. The, the workshops are called the Ambitioning Flood Resilience Workshops, and we've been working on this for about a year, and along with that flood data, which we used to validate a, a computer model, I'll talk to you about that in a little bit, we also seeded the workshops with this, these ideas from the community. So the goal of the workshops was to identify flood mitigation strategies that are in line with community values, but also reduce flooding now and hopefully in the future. And again, we've been working on this for about a year now, or really Thomas has, I should emphasize, this is Thomas's last presentation to you all, he's defending this fall, so he's been working really hard for the last, I guess, four years on this project. So I'm going to introduce the workshops, Thomas will give the main potatoes of the presentation, and then Maxime Yukihino will talk about next steps. All right, so what were the workshops? Here, the goal is just restated at the top of the slide, we randomly selected survey participants that indicated willingness to come to these workshops, there are about 12 of them, and those survey, or those participants really directed the, the modeling that we did throughout the year. Our job as research staff was to do the modeling and also to coordinate the workshop series, and then we had two town staff, Jeremy and then Daniel, who came and they listened to the resident perspectives and also our perspectives on flood mitigation. So what did we do? The first workshop was last June, this was where we first introduced some of the survey responses, how people are actually impacted by the floods, and what ideas they had to combat it, and what I'm showing you on the right, these are some aerial maps- And what I'm showing you on the right, these are some aerial maps of Carolina Beach. And we gave these to small groups and the participants within the workshops marked them up with their ideas on where we might put, what strategy to stop flooding. We then went back and went through all of our notes and all of these ideas and we, we selected the ones that we could actually model and we simulated them with our computer model. And we came back in November of 2024 and we showed some preliminary results with the computer model, which Thomas will be going through today. And then we iterated. So we started to remove some based on participant preferences. And the idea wasn't necessarily to come to a consensus or really we had to modify our plans as researchers because we recognized that was not important. It was more trying to understand trade-offs and values from different strategies within the participant group. Our third workshop occurred in February. We talked a lot about feasibility. That was a concern from workshop participants. Even if a strategy worked at stopping the floods, could we actually do it cost-wise, environmental-wise? So we, we provided a preliminary, we're not practicing engineers, we're researchers, some preliminary estimates of feasibility. And we, we showed our final model results for future scenarios, how well they do not just now at stopping flooding, but five, 10, 20 years down the line. And last but not least, past May, we had our final workshop, which we opened up to the entire community and about 30 attendees came. So they, they saw a bit of what you guys will see here today. And we had a lot of conversations. People could go around and look at the computer model maps and talk to us researchers about some new ideas that they had or what they liked and didn't like and so forth. And then we debriefed with the participants from workshops one and three. All right. So next, what did we actually do with a computer model? This may look familiar. It's a little blurry on this screen. This is a simulation using our computer model. We're looking at the corner of Florida Avenue, which is boxed in yellow and Canal Drive. So here we're showing water from the yacht basin overtopping that lowline farce and going down Florida Avenue and then farther down Canal Drive. So this is a flood event that occurred on January 22nd. Here we turned off rain. I'm showing you the version of the model where we turned off rain. This is just tides, this is and wind. And we compared this computer model to our sensors. So we have all those, those flood sensors and the drivers at Canal. And we've been able to calibrate our model. So it's really good at capturing these, these different drivers of flooding. So this is what the model looks like. During our first workshop, we, we found that folks tend to refer to the types of flooding here in two ways, is saltwater flooding and freshwater flooding. And so that's how we're going to refer to it throughout the rest of the presentation. So saltwater flooding, I'll shut that again. Oops. Maybe it will. Saltwater flooding refers to when high water levels over top lowline shorelines, like I showed in that GIF. And here we're seeing on this lowline parcel on Canal Drive and that saltwater from the yacht basin floods lowline roadways. In our simulations, the drivers that we simulate are tides and wind for saltwater flooding. And then freshwater flooding occurs when, well, the yacht basin doesn't have to overtop the lowline shorelines for these scenarios. It could just be that the water is so high that it blocks the stormwater network like I'm showing here on the left. And because water has nowhere to go, it piles up in the street. So those are our two types of flooding. And now I'm going to hand it off to Thomas to talk about all the strategies that were generated by the project participants that we were able to model and then some of those that we weren't.
All right. So I'm going to talk to you all through the nitty-gritty results from this model, really doing a deep dive on the strategies and how they hold up first at present day sea levels and then towards the end we'll give you future scenarios. But what you're looking at up on the slide are the list of strategies that we heard folks were interested in in workshop one. And you can see, this is a really long list here. There were some strategies that were more, a little bit outside of what we can test in our computer model. Those are what you're seeing up on the right. We talked about those using what we know as engineering, what we know as scientists and proxies from our model, but those weren't things we could test directly. We did have discussions about those. We don't have time to get into them today, but there will be some relevant content in your handouts that you could look through on those right column strategies if you wanted to. The five strategies that we're going to talk about today are on the left, as long as, as well as our, what we're calling concurrent configuration of Canal Drive. So that's Canal Drive as is. So none of this. Okay. So what did we learn from our model about present day flooding on Canal Drive? This is kind of just setting, setting the stage for modeling at present day sea levels. So when we run our model, we pick an example flood. We took a flood that occurred on January 22nd in 2023. And on the left here, we're showing a map that shows where our model says there was flooding on this day if we're just looking at saltwater flooding. So just looking at flooding from tides and winds. This color bar shows water depth. And you can see we've got a little bit of water on the roadway right here in the middle of Canal Drive along the yacht basin, a little bit of water up here by the corner of Canal and Florida. These two floods aren't connecting. So this is what I would call a moderate flood event on Canal Drive. Like for the folks who live down there, probably you've seen more water on Canal than this particular flood event. Call it like a medium, medium saltwater flooding. So that's our baseline flood that we're using to test some of these strategies. The first strategy that we simulated with our model is one we hear about a lot here and that's implementing a minimum bulkhead elevation around the yacht basin. So what we did was we looked back at that 2019 Canal Drive flooding and vulnerability study. We saw that they recommended a 4.7 foot minimum bulkhead elevation around the yacht basin, 4.7 feet NADD 88, I believe. So we said, okay, we'll stick with that. And we raised every bulkhead below 4.7 feet and brought that up to five feet here around the yacht basin, just to kind of be in line with the studies that you all had before. And what you can see from our model simulation is we've got none of that blue shading on the road anymore. For this flood event at present day sea levels, the minimum bulkhead elevation is effective in holding water back in the yacht basin, which is probably fairly intuitive for you all. Like if you block off those lowland shorelines, okay, you walk. Okay. So in the next slide, we're going to go really quickly through some cost estimates and considerations. A note about these, these are cost estimates pulled from other projects at other sites in North Carolina. So they're not considering like site-specific considerations that you all might have in Carolina Beach and might change the cost. Basically, participants in our workshops were really concerned about cost and feasibility, which makes sense, right? You want to evaluate these strategies in the context that they sit within. So we tried to provide a high level information on that, but basically what we're going to show you is the best we could find by group. That was where these numbers come from are other projects in North Carolina. And I'll talk about cost and considerations for bulkheads in the interest of time. We're going to skip that content for the rest of the strategies, but you have it in your packet. For those watching at the moment, these cost estimates and considerations are online. We're going to post a packet as soon as our wet team gets back from vacation. So this, this content will be accessible to you. Okay. So when we're talking about our minimum bulkhead elevation, we saw eliminated saltwater flooding from overtopping of lowline shoreline. But there are a couple of trade-offs with the bulkheads. With your bulkheads, you're not reducing the depth of freshwater and saltwater flooding because you have that rainfall runoff falling behind the bulkhead. So it's actually piling up back there. You're actually going to increase the duration of your freshwater and saltwater flooding a little bit by installing those bulkheads because you're kind of trapping that runoff back on the road instead of letting it flow out through lowline shoreline. And we'll talk about that a lot more coming up as we get into some future scenarios. With bulkheads, we counted 85 bulkheads below five feet NADD 88. That ballparked about $400 a foot to raise those. So our GIS, the GIS look that I took said about 9,000 feet of bulkheads times $400 comes out to about $4 million if you want to get all the bulkheads on the east side of yacht basin up to five feet NADD 88. Okay. So now we have moved from saltwater flooding to freshwater and saltwater flooding. Again, we're looking at our current configuration of Canal Drive. So Canal Drive as is, and basically the flood just got bigger. We now connect from the north end to the middle of Canal Drive flooding all the way along the road because we added, because we've turned on rain in our model. So the next strategy that we're going to talk about and one that our participants brought up a lot is stormwater pumps. Basically what stormwater pumps do is they sit within your stormwater network and they move water from somewhere that you don't want it to be. In your case, the stormwater network or the road on Canal Drive. And they move it to somewhere where you can live with it being. So we've got two examples here, like discharging to a drainage canal or discharging to Dr. Anardi to a dispo to a city or retention area. Now, one important thing to bring up about how we modeled pumps is for our, for the modeling that we did, we didn't look at pump discharge location. So our pumps are pumping water off Canal Drive and magically that water is disappearing. If you were going to move forward with pumps, you have to start to evaluate discharge location. Like are we going to discharge in coastal, to the ocean? Where is all this water going to go? And that's a really big question, one that was out of our scope. But when you start to make that decision, a lot of things are going to come into play like water quality concerns. You have water backing off around where the pumps are discharging that's with. But for this analysis, we're just looking at how effective our pumps can actually move water off Canal Drive as a first.
Thomas, did you guys consider that most of the water that's on Canal is salt, brackish, and that the pumps, the pumps that we have at the lake that are moving, yeah, like maybe a wastewater pump, something a little bit used to the granularity and material? I don't know you got into that level of detail, what type of pump, but.
Yeah. We didn't necessarily get into what type of pump beyond like the pumping capacity. All I'll say to that is there are cities like Miami, for example, has stormwater pumps that handle saltwater. So there are pumps out there that can do it, obviously.
Acknowledging what most of what sits on Canal being brackish salt.
So when we modeled our pumps, again, we're looking at freshwater and saltwater flooding. So we've got rain and saltwater flooding here. Current configuration on the left, pumps on the right. And the way we modeled this was we put pumps at every intersection along Canal Drive, knowing those intersections are the low points where water drains. And what you can see when you look at the pumps compared to the Canal Drive as is, is we just have a lot less shading on the road. Basically up here at the north end, you have a little bit, like a little sheen of water on the surface, like you might expect from a typical rain event. Down here, you do have some, some low spots where water is accumulating. That's just because between these two intersections, you happen to have a low point where we did put a pump. So you might need an extra pump there or something. And there's a little bit of standing water left on the road. So our takeaway was pumps reduce, but don't completely eliminate your present day saltwater freshwater flooding. You can kind of see that summarized in the pros and cons. One thing to note here as a con, pumps can only drain water that comes to the intersection where the pumps are. So you have the low points that aren't pumped, you're going to have water still piling up there. And you all, I'll let you look at costing considerations at any time. Okay. The next strategy we talked about in workshops was combining the two. What does it look like if you build those bulkheads and then put pumps in behind it? So that's what we've done here, looking at freshwater and saltwater again. And here you can see our pumps and minimum bulkhead elevation, they're pretty good at keeping the road dry. When you have saltwater flooding, obviously you're completely preventing that with a bulkhead. And even when you have freshwater and saltwater flooding, the pumps plus the bulkheads are actually 27% better at present day sea levels than pumps alone. So that double protection from the pumps behind the bulkheads does get you better flood prevention, we call it efficacy there. So you can see that in the pros and cons, we're eliminating saltwater flooding from overtopping of low shoreline and then reducing the flood duration depth for freshwater and The, the next strategy that we looked at here was drainage canals. So this one was a little bit out of the ordinary and what we typically heard here talked about from Canal Drive. But basically what this strategy would entail is more or less like sacrificing half the roadway along Canal Drive and putting in a drainage canal along there. And this canal, we, you would put a drainage canal in because it's really efficient at moving water around. So it's, you're going to get water off Canal Drive a lot faster with a big drainage canal than you would with, for example, little stormwater pumps. Now, there are obviously some considerations here, right? You're giving up half of Canal Drive, so you need to envision, re-envision how traffic works there. You'd have to deal with driveway connections. You would have to deal with, there was one more consideration. We'll get to that. But obviously we're thinking a little bit outside the box here, right? But this was what we asked our participants to do. So we wanted to see would it even work from like a flooding perspective?
You're maintaining half the road that you do today, which is pros and cons for sure. Maybe a bike van hanging to that as well.
You'd have underground infrastructure you'd have to deal with along there, lots of considerations around this one. We just tested it from a flooding scenario. And the way this canal connects back to the yacht basin is via a sluice gate. So you keep that sluice gate closed when water levels in the yacht basin are high, you're going to have water flowing back towards the road. Then as soon as water on Canal Drive gets tired in the yacht basin, you have to pull out and you open that sluice gate and that water flow out. So here's our canal along Canal Drive. It's here in the light blue, a little hard to see, I apologize. And actually in our later workshops, folks, our participants asked us to just make the canal cover the north half of Canal Drive, more flood ground portion. So we're taking the north half of Canal Drive and we're draining back to the yacht basin here where we have a sluice gate connecting our canal to the yacht basin. And what we saw with the canal was it was really good at reducing flood duration. We sped up the drain into floodwaters by 30 to 40% here. Here we're looking at flushing freshwater, saltwater flooding. And you can see our road's pretty dry here about halfway through the flood, whereas we've still got a fair bit of water left on the road when we look at Canal Drive as is. So if we go to our pros and cons, our canal along Canal does allow floodwaters to drain faster for both saltwater and freshwater floods. And you actually get a little more storage for floodwaters compared to the present day roadway because you have a little bit of a, a little bit of area alongside the road to hold like the first bit of flooding that comes in. The con here is you're not getting much reduction in flood depth. It's really not a strategy that gives you any, much of a reduction in flood depth. Okay. The last strategy we looked at was kind of the big fish, so to speak. And this is a movable flood barrier. The way these flood barriers work is they keep high water levels on the ocean side away from your back. So our project team visited the flood barrier, Venice, the most famous example of this kind of infrastructure. So Venice, this is the Mediterranean Sea. This is the lagoon where Venice sits. And if you have high water levels in the Mediterranean, you close this flood barrier, keep the high water levels out your back, Venice stays here. The way this could potentially work in Carolina Beach is you have your high ground with your boat ramp over here, you have your high ground and the marina over here. And in theory, you could build a flood barrier across, keep it open most of the time to let folks, fishermen, what have you, get out of the yacht basin. And then when you expect a king tide event or a high wind setup event, you close it to keep high water levels in Snow's Cut and the ocean held back. And you can see from this GIF that the barrier works pretty well. See our water level moving around in Marsh, water level changing in Snow's Cut, but our water level isn't changing back here in the yacht basin. That means the barrier is doing its job. If it was, if you built a barrier here and closed it, you would keep water levels in your yacht basin like at whatever they were when you closed it. So basically your flood barrier could tie into high ground across the boat ramp and marina to prevent flooding. Obviously some considerations here, right? Very expensive, you're going to cut off maritime traffic and you're going to disrupt that flushing and circulation in the yacht basin, which could add some water quality impacts there. But from a flooding standpoint, it works pretty well. Okay. So we talked through all these strategies with our participants. And if you were looking at the price tags, you probably saw like a lot of numbers that ended in a million, right? So our participants saw that and they said, man, we should really be looking at the effectiveness of these strategies, not just today, but if we're going to invest millions of dollars in a strategy, it better work tomorrow, right? Five, 10, 20, maybe even further than that down the line. So participants started to ask questions about what's the life span? So participants started to ask questions about what's the lifespan of these strategies? Are there trade offs like strategies we might see working really well now, but might not work so well in the future? What might be some unintended consequences that we should be aware of if we're going to implement such a big significant strategy like someone wants to talk about? So Yuki's going to talk about how we set up our future sea levels modeling, our future scenarios modeling to start answering some of these questions for our participants.
All right, so one thing we know today is that sea levels are going to keep rising into the future. We don't know exactly how much and how fast. So to make sure that the decisions you're making today are informed by what might happen in the future, what we did is we put together data on best and worst case scenarios, thinking about a range of potential futures and looking at how the different strategies that Thomas just presented would perform under those best and worst case scenarios. So in a best case scenario, greenhouse gas emissions drop very quickly and the amount of heat that we put into the ocean is relatively small and sea level will continue to rise over time, but it'll be relatively slow. In a worst case scenario, emissions are steady or increasing and that will pump more heat into the ocean and the sea level will rise faster. So we know that sea level, we know what direction we're going in, we just don't know how fast. So we took data for Wilmington for sea level rise projections, looking, drawing on federal data from NOAA. And we took their intermediate low and intermediate high projections. So this isn't actually their full band, they actually have a low and a high, but we took intermediate low to intermediate high. We did some math to convert it to 2022 water levels. And here are the numbers that we're working with for different sea level rise scenarios over time. So pretty much 2030, we're expecting about three inches regardless because there's not much, there's not that much uncertainty in what's going to happen in 10 years between 2020 and 2030. When you look at 2040 to 2050, we expect to hit about seven inches of sea level rise sometime between, sometime in that decade. So again, if emissions are high and increasing and sea level rise is occurring relatively quickly, we might see seven inches by 2040 or it might not be till later, until the middle of the century. A foot of sea level rise, we anticipate somewhere between 2050 and 2070. And then two feet, 24 inches of sea level rise, 2070 to 2100. What's really important to note here is that the timeframes that are important to you and to the residents of Carolina Beach are up to you. So we are not presenting this information to say you need to make a plan that's going to work to 2100 or you need to not care about 2100, only care about 2030. We're presenting all the information, some of the time periods may be more important or less important and that's totally local context and frankly, individual preference about how those priorities play out over time. So to give you a sense of what this might look like, we took one of our cameras and took that baseline 2022 flood and then found flood images that correspond to that same increase in elevation that I just told you about. So this 2022 flood that Thomas has been modeling, the picture of that is on the left. Three inches deeper than that, so we can tell exactly what that is from our sensor, looks like this picture on the right. So the way that you can think about it is as often as you're seeing this picture on the left, you'll be seeing this picture on the right in 2030. For seven inches, which is again about mid-century, the picture on the right is seven inches deeper than the baseline flood that we've been talking about. A foot deeper, you can see is significantly more extensive than what we're looking at in 2022 just in terms of how far up towards Carolina Beach Ave the water is reaching and of more closer approaching properties as well. And then this is two feet deeper than the baseline 2022 flood, which is, I believe, the deepest flood that we have in our record. This image here on the right. So again, this is anywhere from 2070 to 2100, depending on what happens in the future. Another thing to note, so in addition to the depth and the frequency is changing, the durations are going to change. So the deeper a flood is, the longer it's going to take to receive. And so that flood that lasts 1.2 hours today will be about 1.6 hours in 10 years, I guess now we're in five years. 2.2 hours around mid-century, three hours as you get closer to the 2060s, 2070s and then five to seven hours when it's two feet deeper. So again, we know that the floods, absent any action taken between now and sometime in the future, the floods are likely to become deeper and longer and the floods that you see today, again, think about how frequently you see that baseline 2022 flood and you can then use the pictures to think about how often you might see those pictures in the future. But the precise timeline to plan for is really dependent on the project, the specifics, the context, the properties and so forth. Okay, I will now switch back to Thomas so he can share how the different strategies that he modeled perform under these different scenarios.
Okay, so now we're going to go back to the model results, but we're going to show them a little bit differently this time. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to, we're going to step through this graph and talk through, it's going to be a bar graph and we'll talk through what the different bars mean. But before we get into it, we'll talk about the axes first. Here on our horizontal axis going this way, we have the different sea level rise timeframes that Yuki talked about. We have our present day, which those results will be the same results I showed you with the map. And then we'll look at five years from now, that's 2030 sea levels that Yuki talked about, all the way out to 45 to 75 years from now, looking at in the century. And like, like Professor Hino said, we're showing you all these results, so you have them. We're not telling you you have to plan for 2070 to 2100. Like it can get a bit overwhelming there, that'll be up for you as a community to, to think about like what do we want to plan for? Thinking about what will Canal Drive look if we don't do anything, what will it look if we do something? We're just here to provide that data for you. And then on the vertical axis, we have our maximum flood depth. So we're going down from zero feet down here to three feet up here. Our bars that we're going to pop up are a list of strategies, so different colors show different strategies. And then the lighter shades show saltwater flooding, the darker shades show freshwater and saltwater flooding. All of these results come from the intersection of Plainfield Lake and Canal Drive, that's a photo we were popping up. Our sea level rise, a photo of this. Everyone feel good about that? Okay, so starting with present day results, this is just the graph form of what I showed you before. One thing I want you to notice right away is we see no red bars, we see no purple bars, we see no orange bars. That means for our pumps, our pumps and bulkheads and our flood barrier scenarios, we're not seeing flooding with any of those because those bars aren't there. We are seeing a dark green bar, that's our bulkheads freshwater and saltwater flooding scenario. So like we talked about, we get a little bit of rainfall runoff flooding behind those bulkheads, getting up to about half a foot deep of that intersection. That's our takeaway right here. Basically, all your steps in time, your bulkheads prevent saltwater, but not freshwater saltwater flooding. And then we're seeing, we're seeing a brown bar that's actually a little bit higher than our blue bar that's saying we're going to have slightly deeper, like an inch deeper flooding with that partial canal, canal along the north half of Canal Drive. And that's just because your canal is really good at moving water along the road, right? So once you get a little bit of water on the road, it's really good at moving it around, not, not only when we're draining water out, but also when water falls in behind a sluice gate, it can move really quickly up and down the road with that canal. It's actually a little bit deeper, it's just a, kind of just another way to say you don't get any reduction in flood depth with that canal. Okay, when we look out to five years from now, we start to see some flooding with the pumps. But our, our orange bar here is still a little bit different than our blue bar, which is Canal Drive as is. So it's telling us our pumps slightly reduce flood depth in the short term. When we look out till mid-century, our pumps and our canal strategies, those really had minimal influence on flood depth. And you might think, well, why aren't the pumps pumping down this floodwater here, why aren't we getting any depth reductions? That's because basically you have a direct connection from your floodwaters in the yacht basin in the ocean to Canal Drive. So these pumps are trying to pump down the ocean at your peak flood stage here. So you could put the biggest, baddest pump in the world there, but there's just always going to be more water than that came from. By the time we get out to mid-century, we start seeing these deeper floods. So your pumps will give you a flood duration reduction, but you're not going to see much flood depth reduction up past mid-century. Okay, when we get out to 2050 to 2070, we are seeing some flooding even with our pumps and bulkheads. And that's basically just because we've got so much water in our system now, those stormwater outfalls are under a ton of water, even though we have bulkheads holding the water back. Our pumps aren't quite fast enough even working behind the bulkheads to keep Canal Drive completely dry. And the other thing is we start to get a little bit of water coming out of the north end marsh and flooding down south towards Canal Drive. Water coming out of that marsh behind Freeman Park, and I'm going to pop up a GIF to show you what that would look like in a couple of slides here. Then when we get out towards end of the century, that's when our, our, even that five foot bulkhead elevation that was recommended for the study, that starts to get overtopped, so we see our bulkheads and our barrier are just underwater, or sorry, our bulkheads are underwater there. That's your red and your green bars. And then even with a flood barrier, we start to get a lot of water spilling out of the north end marsh, which means it's coming around the flood barrier at the entrance to the yacht basin. And we start to get some flooding even with that more significant flood barrier at the entrance to the yacht basin. So I'm going to show you what that looks like in map form because I think that's a little bit more intuitive. And the example we're going to use is this 2050 to 2070 bulkheads simulation that we ran with our model. So use a GIF of water moving around in our model. We have our higher five foot bulkheads right here in orange. And here our water depth scale is zero feet down here, up to four feet, plus in your dark blues. And when we're looking at 2050 to 2070 models, even though we built up our bulkheads here around the yacht basin, we do start to see some water spilling out of the, the marsh behind Freeman Park right here, starting to move down towards Canal Drive. We're not getting more than a few blocks down to the south, but it is just something you may want to be aware of for the future. That could be a future flooding vulnerability. And then with your bulkheads, the water actually gets trapped here behind the bulkhead. So it's going to take a little longer to drain because you built that wall and it's holding water back. So yeah, not only are bulkheads good to keep water out, also good to keep water in. Okay, so last set of model results for you. I know the graphs can be a lot, so two more slides of this, we're through. Will the strategies that worked today still work tomorrow? Now we're taking a look at flood duration. Last one was flood depth. Now on our vertical axis, we've stored any flood duration, flood lasting from zero hours to 10 hours. Same kind of color scheme, timeframe, all that. Okay, so looking at the near future out through 2040 to 2050, one thing you see with your pumps and your canal, you're going to get faster drainage of your floodwaters by 30 minutes to an hour for all of these. These keep, these things will keep draining water faster regardless of the sea levels. Always going to see your brown bar, your orange bar being a little bit shorter than your blue bar, no matter what the sea levels are. When we look at installing bulkheads in terms of flood duration, your flood with this green bar, if you're looking at freshwater and saltwater flooding, so remember that rain hitting at high tide, that kind of flooding is going to last as long as your stormwater outfalls are underwater. So for as long as your high tide is submerging those stormwater outfalls, you're going to have a rainfall piling up behind it on the road, behind those bulkheads. And then when we look out to end of century, one important thing to notice here is your, your green and your red bars are your tallest bars here. So that's your bulkhead scenarios. And basically what that means is once those bulkheads do get overtopped or once we have water coming in from the north end and hitting Canal Drive, then your higher bulkheads are going to significantly slow your drainage of floodwaters even compared to, for example, no intervention on Canal Drive. Because those, those lowline lots that are really good at bringing water into Canal Drive, present day, are a huge problem, they become really good at bringing water out of Canal Drive in the future. When you have really big volumes of floodwater, your water drains a lot faster through, for example, a lowline lot compared to a small stormwater case. So that's why you see these bars being so much higher than the other bars at the end. With your flood barrier, things start to get really complicated once you get water coming from the north end marsh and filling the yacht basin from behind. So don't put too much stock in this model result right here. Basically, the timing of that barrier closure and opening is really important in determining your, your late century flood duration when you have kind of water moving around. So that was a lot of content right there. The good news for y'all is it's all available online on our website, go.ncsu.edu/cv. If you want to review it in your own time, we also have maps there where you can look at bigger spatial scales than what we show here. So you can look at all of Canal Drive, you can look at the west side of the yacht basin. One thing I might note, none of those strategies had much impact on flooding on the west side. So what you do on the east side doesn't seem to affect the west side too much. But that is available for you all as resource, we're going to post a packet that we handed out to you all on there. So all of our model results, workshop results are uploaded up there for you all to reference if you need them. And now I'm going to turn it over to Max who will talk more about what did we hear from our community participants about these strategies and next steps.
Well, thank you, Thomas. Mayor, councilors, residents of Carolina Beach, town staff, we appreciate and are grateful for your attention and participation. Recognizing that there is a lot of technical information, I'm going to close us out by kind of zooming us back out and refocusing on the purpose of these workshops, which is that scientific evidence can and should inform decision making, but many of these questions are questions of local values. And for those reasons, these workshops were vital for us to understand questions that science alone cannot answer around values associated with judgments of temporal questions, how far into the future do you want to look? And what sort of value do you associate with those? Questions around things like cost, questions around things like flood duration and flood frequency. Sometimes the same intervention can do both and sometimes one can make floods more frequent or longer while helping out with the other one. Those are questions that we can model and that evidence can help to inform, but those need to be informed by local values. So we're grateful to the residents here in Carolina Beach that helped us to figure out what we should model. We wanted to make sure that what was presented today were in line with long-term community goals. So we went through creating results based off of what we heard from residents in these workshops. And then these are a few of the preferences that we heard a little bit about for both the short term and the long term. So after iterating on potential strategies and reviewing model results, workshop participants reviewed or preferred for the short term, minimum bulkhead elevation and/or pumps. And for the longer term, that flood barrier, the canal along Canal Drive and increased minimum bulkhead elevation and pumps. There is a strong desire for the town to implement a flood resilient strategy or a sequenced set of strategies to keep pace with rising sea levels that was shared by almost all workshop and open house participants. Our major takeaway or one of our major takeaways here is that no single strategy deals with all of the different drivers of flooding, both under current and future sea level scenarios, and there are trade offs with each strategy informed by value systems. Bulkheads work well against tides, but not rain. They also slow the drainage of rainfall runoff and floodwaters that bypass the bulkheads. Pumps placed at intersections can remove water from those intersections, but they can't keep up with deeper floods or higher sea levels because they're essentially pumping down the ocean. Building a gate at Snow's Cut while costly blocks the tide from filling up the back basin, but eventually at higher sea levels, water finds a way through the marshes of Freeman Park. While there is no silver bullet for flooding in Carolina Beach, the town and residents will need to start making decisions based on their values and their collective vision for the future. Our project is here to support the town and residents moving forward with the modeling work we have already done and continued flood monitoring projects here. I want to give a huge amount of gratitude to town staff Jeremy and Daniel for their invaluable insight, guidance and participation in the workshops. These would not have been possible without their participation. So Jeremy, thank you so much, thank you to Daniel as well. Time permitting, I think we have a little bit of time for questions that the team has probably needed. probably needed for since we are largely interdisciplinary team. But again, extending a huge amount of gratitude for all of y'all for your attention.
Any questions from council for these guys?
Yeah, so I've got one question. So it looks like the magic number for bulkhead right now is four foot seven to five feet, but after 45 years, it's going to be obsolete. So, and if you go to six feet, that just extends it, but it traps more water. There's really no good solution here. I mean, believe me, I appreciate all the work you guys have done, but it is an eye-opener. It is, it's devastating because there really is no solution.
I think that's one way to look at it.
Well, I mean, you can slow it up, right? You can slow it up, but you can't stop it.
Well, that gets back to what Max was talking about, what is the value with time? And how I heard some folks talk about it was, can we buy time with some strategies? So perhaps it's futile to look towards the end of the century, but you might rephrase or reposition that buy into a different timeline.
So bulkheads right now, you're talking about $4 million divided by 85 properties. So you're talking about $47,000 per property, which the only problem is if I'm a homeowner, I mean, I would provide a bulkhead, but if my neighbor doesn't, it makes no sense. So there's that whole piece we have to look at. How does that take place? So it's a tough situation.
Jay, I would add to that. I see it, today was very beneficial for me because I see it a little bit differently. And I agree that if we had to solve every town problem with a hundred-year vision, we're not going to solve many problems at all because there's just so many unknowns. And no matter what issue, we're talking about stormwater, flooding, Canal Drive, all of that sort of stuff. So, but what I took from this was very helpful because it gets your brain thinking about what can we do? And I know in my interactions with the folks on the north end, they understand the situation. They're not looking for miracles. They're just saying, what can we do to improve it? Right? And I think this gives us a lot of things to think about. So for that standpoint, remember this, no disrespect to you guys, but this is an academic exercise of what if, what could, right? And that's the benefit. The benefit is to get your brain thinking about how these different strategies might, maybe a piece of this and a piece of that, and maybe part of it works in one part of the Canal Drive and the other piece. But I think it's just good to, I think this was fantastic, all the work these guys have done, just to get the conversation going, if for no other reason.
Three and a half years. It has been. Am I right? I appreciate what you guys have done, and I think really from our perspective here as the council, that if any municipality's mission statement is the public health, welfare, and safety, then to not do something, as you've wrapped up work in other towns, cities and towns, maybe they've looked at a few options, because I remember Dr. Nardi saying, well, I'm not here to recommend one over the other. The body of work will reveal itself, some things that the town can do. It's our job now to do the right thing, and that is to accelerate action. There's some engineering designs that we talked about, Bruce. We didn't know what would be presented, so you can't, you know, get those. Those don't go underway until everything has been, you know, been looked at. A couple of interesting things. The sensors often, almost always detected water close to where the sensor was itself, which means a lot of those storm drains, those catch basins are spring loaded with water to begin with. Right? So water comes down from the skies, stormwater, or up and across properties from the sound, tidal intrusion, if you will. The mission then becomes, how do we reduce spatially and temporally, mostly saltwater, but some freshwater, off of public-private properties, that which impacts critical infrastructure off the road? You know, more than just Canal Drive itself, because there's, you know, there's health factors that go into long, water standing for long periods of time. I noticed the pumps, bulkhead, I think we see that, we see how that, like, very concrete image of deterrent, deterrence of water. The pumps to the pump, were you thinking maybe dune infiltration? Because water's got to go somewhere, you get to get rid of the water, move it somewhere else where it's not impacting the public. Dune infiltration was one option that I remember going out and visiting some sites. Of course, that relies on where the water table is below the surface. Did you guys look at any of that at all?
So we avoided the question of where to put water because it's such a complex one. And I think there were 15 pumps, is that right, Thomas? All right, 15 pumps. You have to add infrastructure for each of those pumps to go someplace. Maybe they go to the dune, maybe they go to a new lake or something like that. But it was just too big of a question for us to tackle. Volume of water was more important, and it's a lot of water.
That's right, yeah. Get into the aquifer as opposed to just throwing it back into the sound is an option. But it does rely on a number of things. Question about the 4 million, that would be the contiguous uninterrupted, five foot nine was the aptim height. Five seven, five nine, yeah, five seven. All the way to the 85 properties stretched, does some of those properties already have bulkheads built to that elevation? So maybe it's, were you talking about just the ones that do not have one today?
Yeah, so that one was just me picking out everything that was below that, I use five foot, I may have been incorrect, maybe the report said five seven. But basically, I just went through their, you know how they cataloged all the bulkheads in that report? I just picked out everything that was below five foot and raised it.
Got it. That makes sense. And then I'll close this, Bruce and I talked about this yesterday. It becomes, what does winning look like? Like, just what do we want to, if we walk out of here today, not eighth grade fun, we've been admiring the problem for generations, let's just keep doing that, we know that's not, you can't imagine that. So the water's already there, pumps, it seems to make sense, and you guys did tons of work on this, moving the water away, reducing the time it spends and this expansion of water, that's the mission. There's options, Bruce, that moving forward is, get some cost estimates on a number of projects, to include dune infiltration, but it could be infiltration under a parking lot for all, doesn't have to go that far. Yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready to jump in this movement, get it better.
I do want to comment that, yes, pumps do draw down water at the intersection set they're at, to a point. And what we showed with the higher sea levels, it's not just the end of the century, but at some point, they can't keep up. And they're still going to be flooding in between those intersections. So strategic placement of pumps, also maintenance of pumps, for them to continue to work 10 years down the line are things that you need to.
It's almost, you'd be pumping it down before the event, like the lake, because if the water's already there, we know it's there, it's in the catch basin, we'd be pumping that water down before the king tide event, or before the drought. Those considerations for the town.
Sorry, Jay.
Yeah, no.
I had one other question. So there are other projects to be done in that area, right? So we know in our infrastructure plan, I think it's 2032, if I remember correctly, is when we're supposed to do water sewer, which would tear that road up and repave it. We know that the road bed is insufficient there. So that project, I'm not a road engineer, so I'm just going from what I'm told, but more than likely, that road is going to be elevated, right? Just has to be. It has to come up to be during those projects. Did we think at all about what that looks like post that project? I mean, we don't know what that elevation would be. I'm just curious how that's going to change the whole dynamic.
So water has to go somewhere. And if you raise a road and you don't raise the yards, then it kind of acts like a bulkhead, right?
Yeah.
And water will get trapped in certain areas, just based on the elevation of the road. So I think you can kind of squint at the bulkhead scenarios and think how elevating a road might similarly block water, but then you have all of those homes.
To the west of that road are going to be sitting in the sound, basically.
Just at the same time, I think, thinking about this in the big picture, and I think one of the nice things about the canal along canal idea was thinking really big picture about, is this not just fixing a flooding problem, but are there other changes that we're going to make to this area that can address other concerns that we have or other priorities that we have? And so the idea of like, well, maybe there's pedestrian bike improvements, you know, and we fix the road and we try to do some of those flooding things at the same time. Getting the conversation going now, you know, increases the odds, you can kind of do all of those things at once rather than trying to piecemeal it all together.
Hundred, hundred percent agree. Now's the time to think about it before that project happens, right?
Awesome. Any other questions, guys?
May I speak?
Yes, you may.
All right. First of all, I do sincerely appreciate what you've done, and it's very good. Maybe I'm biased, but Thomas particularly, my daughter goes NC State, maybe that's why. But I appreciate what you've done for us because this, you're better at this than we are, anybody in this room. So it's eye-opening. Look, there are strategies, there's no guaranteed solutions, but they're talking about mitigation potent, you know, strategies. We also have to talk about the other piece of this puzzle, which is also learning to live with it. Okay? It's a thing, right? Besides trying to stop the water from coming in, what can we do to live with it? We've worked, looked at early warning systems, how to close the roads better. I mean, for some reason, what, six months ago, we still didn't have a gate down in Florida or on Virginia Avenue? You know, things like that, that we have to learn to live with this. And that goes for the citizens along Canal. I've heard it said many times, like, what happens if someone, you know, has a health crisis during a flood and you can't get an ambulance there? True. Of course, we do have vehicles that can get through high waters, but the citizens who live up there who have these potential issues, you have to think about this too. And then the other point I would make about dealing with this is, I'm going to start with two questions for everybody in the room. One, are you committed to trying to improve this problem? And the second question is, are you really committed to improving this problem, or are you just saying you're committed to improving this problem? Because this is an expensive fix, y'all. Way I calculated, it's a $20 million job, and it's not even going to solve anything. You prepared to spend $20 million? It's a lot of money. I've done the math, okay? Depending on how you wanted to spend, you know, parcel that out. My little house in Carolina Beach, it would cost me anywhere, if you borrowed $20 million for 20 years, it would cost me personally, anywhere from 120 bucks a year to $300 a year, depending on how we shared that cost. Are we prepared to do that? Are folks on the north end who are more impacted by this, are you prepared to put in more to help this cause? Or are you expecting everybody else to pay the same? That's the big decision and big discussion we have to have. Who pays for this? 20 million bucks, think about that, long and hard. That's the kind of price we're talking about here. This is not something where we can just do it and it's not going to affect our budget. It's going to seriously affect the budget.
Do you remember what the stormwater and paving cost? You weren't around for that, Bruce, but maybe you know the number. It was 2008, the town went in security, it was a one-third, two-third private property owner town arrangement for stormwater and paving in Wilmington Beach, when Wilmington Beach was incorporated into city, town limits. I know I paid my last, on my mortgage statement, I paid the last amount of whatever it was, 50, 60 dollars or something, divided up by property, right? And that was a 15-year debt.
You're talking about the water sewer in Wilmington Beach?
Well, when we, specifically paving and, paving.
Paving and stormwater.
Assessment.
And how was that divided up? The town paid a third and y'all paid two-thirds?
It's just like we do for like the extension of Spa and for second, it's a two-third, one-third. The developer, whoever owns the land, and then divided up by owners, plural, and then the town. There's different funding strategies, you know, that we'd be looking at when we get some estimates.
I'm going to pull this back from funding strategy, only because we're, all good points, but.
I did want to add on what Mike said, though, about the residents starting to live with it. I think the residents have learned what they have to do to survive these flooding. It's not the residents, it's the visitors. We can't educate every visitor who gets a short-term rental on Canal Drive as to how to handle it when there's a king tide or a flooding event. That's part of, and yes, it is an education piece, but if I'm coming here for a week, I'm not going to look and see what your ordinance is as far as flooding.
When I say learning to live with it, yeah, I suspect everybody in the front row there has learned how to live with this and prepare for it. But the town, us here in the local government have to learn to live with this. How do we make sure these roads are closed? How do we enforce that people aren't blazing through the high waters? Honestly, I still haven't really, I'm not terribly pleased with the way we have, as a town, have learned to live. We've made some improvements, but we could do better. Yeah, can you educate every visitor? No. But, you know, it still seems like these king tides happen and we act like we didn't know they were coming. And we don't have gates down, and we don't have police stationed out there to keep people from driving through three feet of saltwater. I mean, that's on us as the local government.
It's also that road that brings a lot of people out to the park, thousands and thousands a year. And that does generate revenue to the town. That, to me, reinforces the need to do our municipal duty, serviceable road.
All right, I'm going to move us on. Thank you, guys. I did want to finish with Thomas, congratulations. Hopefully you'll get out of school someday. My daughter just, my daughter just completed hers, and I think she's ready to go flip burgers, a ten-bar, anything other than go to school. So congratulations. I know you're not quite there yet, but you've done a good job.
Appreciate it all.
Thank you, guys.
Lynn, will there be any possibility to make a statement or a comment right now?
No, not during, no, not during the workshop, but you can come back. We have public comment during the regular.
After this meeting?
At the council meeting.
No, during the regular council meeting. We just don't do public comment during workshops. We didn't plan on it. Certainly, we'd love to hear, individually love to hear from you, certainly send us an email, talk to us, we'll come talk to you, whatever needs to happen.
I'd like to talk to you all after this meeting, if that's possible.
Then that would be another, that would be another meeting.
Individually or?
It would have to be affairs. We can't three of us have a meeting with you. You know the rules. So again, not my preference, I'm just trying to, as a parliamentarian here, I'm just trying to follow the rules. Next up, Bruce, we have the north end town update. So kind of give us an update on the history and what we've been able to do so far.
Jeremy's going to do a presentation. I would just like to address, we're talking about putting the flood arms and all that and having police. We do what we can with the resources we have. We can, we can add more employees and have someone sitting there and doing that, but we struggle to get those things done. All right, Jeremy?
Mayor, council? Thank you. I'd just like to talk kind of about what staff has done, just short-term approaches to help mitigate flooding on the north end by using information from the Flooding and Vulnerability Study, the Sunday Day Project research, and what are things that we could be doing right now? And one, you know, we've heard is bulkheads. And one, you know, we've heard is bulkheads. And one thing from the study was there were several, you know, bulkheads from the inventory of the height of bulkheads and our staff was really focused on the ones that were below three feet. We wanted to look at those first and, you know, where was water maybe overtopping bulkheads? Of course, this is not the only way that water may be intruding or flooding Canal Drive, but it definitely is a way that water is encroaching and causing nuisances in the area. So I wanted to go through and just kind of update these properties, what the town did, send out letters to those. Wasn't anything threatening or we're not trying to string armor or anything, we just more information. And I don't know if it caused the property owner to take action or not, but there are several that did. One was 1013 Canal Drive. They've, it did have a bulkhead, but it was inadequate bulkhead. It simply water would just go, it didn't tie to anything, it was essentially literally just a floating bulkhead out there. That water would just go around. So they did fix that situation, tied it to the neighbors and brought in field. As essentially Canal Drive is, it's an elevation issue. Same thing with 1005 Canal Drive, this was an existing house. It did not have a bulkhead, so they did install one surrounding the property. Another one was 217 Florida Avenue, that's just, all it had was some vegetation and a small fence as protection. It has since now installed a bulkhead tied into the neighbor's property. 211 Florida Avenue as well, it did have a bulkhead, but it replaced a higher one and also wrapped it around where there did not have a bulkhead on the side, so now it has making that, that connection.
Jeremy, did both of those properties go to 57 on the bulkhead?
I don't have the exact.
Or is that a design standard that we've adopted that a permit can be between us and coastal management? That if you achieve that, proceed?
The Division of Coastal Management, they don't have any type of height regulations?
No, they don't. We do, I'm saying, yeah.
We do not currently. It's something if we wanted to look at, we could adopt, but we do not have any bulkhead standards currently.
That's a problem.
We should probably look at that.
Some of the, I guess, some folks know it intuitively or they've heard it and they went to that height, but.
Yes, so that's something we do promote and encourage, but there's not any type of regulatory authority that we would have to.
We'd need legislation to.
Which goes back to, yeah, enabling legislation on regulating the sound grid large, okay.
Yeah, right now we couldn't set the height limit if we wanted to, right?
Nor enact the nuisance abatement ordinance that we have in the books.
Right, yeah, without enabling legislation.
Another property that was identified, and they did have a bulkhead, but on the north side, it was determined that this is a weak link in the water was entering in, which they did put some, some bulkheadings up in that area. So those are some properties that, you know, have improved the property, there are some currently out there. One of the lowest elevated property that really acts like a gateway, I'm trying to pick on this property, but to the yacht basin is 1007 Canal Drive. It was one that was used in a presentation prior. It currently doesn't have any type of bulkhead. And elevation is 1.9 feet. Water does get into the street from here. And one of the issues is, you know, that I heard from the property owner is just, you know, the placement of the bulkhead. As the Division of Coastal Management, they do have regulations on coastal wetlands and the placement of that bulkhead and where it could be on the property. 1305 Canal Drive, it's a timber bulkhead, it's 2.6. This is a multifamily building and when they constructed it, they brought in some field for the slab of the building and then put a bulkhead, but it doesn't exceed past the concrete slab of, of that structure, so. They would need to elevate that ideally. One is a rock, concrete rubble type of protection, but it's a 2.7 feet and it was shown to be inadequate that. Another one's 1017 Canal Drive, it doesn't have any bulkhead, it's a 2.8 feet. 107 Florida Avenue, this was another vulnerable area. And this was a little bit different because the town actually had a project, it was, is budgeted to put a bulkhead up along the right of way. But with that and the tie-in to the neighbors, we would need to, which the town was willing to pay for it, cooperation or permitting with the property owners. But meeting with the property owners, the town was unable to come up with any type of agreement or cooperation with adjacent property owners, so we were unable to move forward. They were wanting to take more of a legal approach with the Division of Coastal Management through a variance process.
To the CRC for, for judgment.
Correct, and there hasn't been any movement on their part as of today.
So was this to tie in to their bulkhead?
In order to be, to make it efficient and for water to prevent the water from milling in the street, it would need to tie into the existing bulkheads.
And they said no?
Uh, yes, correct.
Why wasn't it?
Yeah, kind of where the red line is shown here.
Look, that's a challenge we always deal with as a town. You have great projects that'll help the whole community and one person will stand strong against it. It's not new.
Jeremy, I've got a question. Have you ever talked to a realtor about bulkheads about, so let's say I invest $50,000 for bulkhead on my property. Have you ever talked to a realtor on how does that increase their property value percentage wise? Does it increase to 25,000, 30,000? Have you had a discussion with a realtor about that?
I have not.
It'd be interesting, because you know your property value would automatically go up, I would imagine, if you have a bulkhead.
If we had a contiguous bulkhead from once, from south to north in the east side, then would that do anything with the FEMA maps that come out every five years? Because I know some of the, the pre-board, some of the things adopted in 2018 drove the flood insurance costs down about 20%. My memory is correct? To the benefit of resident, commercial uses, public uses.
Yeah, but whenever there's someone looking, you know, I get phone calls on Canal Drive, Florida Avenue. I mean, I, I do have a conversation about flooding, you know, the current conditions out there, you know, what the town's working on. Flood insurance, I do have those conversations.
A contiguous bulkhead would probably be a signal to drive down those high velocity zones and maybe alter the whole landscape.
So bulkhead does decrease your insurance? If you have bulkheads the whole way?
Right.
Yeah, but, but we've seen examples of that.
You would think.
Those houses that have lost themselves in.
And I don't try to get into, if you do this, it'll increase your property value. I try to stay away.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Second order effects and that could be a good one.
So I'll talk without that enabling legislation, folks.
Well, I tell you, on Mike's comment, that's an eye-opener and I appreciate the north end folks taking me out on the boat that day. You realize when you go see it from the water, it's a, it's a mess. Because nothing, I mean, there are beautiful new bulkheads in front of some places. There are other places where there aren't, there are residents that, you know, the family owns the property and they don't want to invest any money in it. The town can't because we don't have the legislation to force it. When we tried that, we didn't get, I guess it's still sitting out there, but it hasn't moved. And we're kind of in this, I mean, something has to give. Either the town has to be authorized to enforce this and then go either build them and charge the residents or somehow get people to, somehow to get these bulkheads built. But right now, we're, we're, about all we can do is public shaming, which doesn't seem like a very effective way to, to get something done. So it's really a.
There's also the option of eminent domain, but that's, could be top courts and could be.
Yeah, if we had infinite money, we could just, because we had to buy those properties, we could eminent domain and buy them for the public good, but where's that money come from? Right?
Yeah. So another thing I just wanted to mention, of course, what has the town on our side as owner of over 1,500 linear feet of frontage of, on the canal, is we want to make sure that we're doing our part. And so we have built new bulkheads on several street ends and, and have plans to do so on several more. And we have used that 5.7 foot height as our standard when we build anything new. That's, that's what we're building it to. So we also, on scallop, we did the same thing, seagull, as well as starfish. And important to our town marina was built to that elevation as when we re, we've just rebuilt the bulkhead. I'm going to turn it over now to Brian to talk about more of the infrastructure, stormwater side of things and what improvements that the town has made recently.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Thanks, Jeremy. First of all, thanks for the sunny day flooding folks for, you know, creating all that work and food for us to, food for thought for us to solve some new problems as we go forward. I'm here to just try to go over an operational standpoint of how we're trying to, I guess, control the controllables in our situation, like the things that we can do now, what are we trying to do? So first of all, one of the aptum, and the aptum study from 2017, I believe, one of the primary recommendations was tideflake valves. Backflow valves are very critical because the stormwater infrastructure is the primary point of entry for the floodwaters, it's the first place to come through, so we all know that. What we have done in the past couple of years, we've replaced the valve in the marina, as you can see on there. That, that is very, very problematic for a large, large portion of the center portion of town, pretty given the way we've talked about that in the past. That is very detrimental when we have a backflow there. We also replaced all the, right, those four valves on the east side. We did that as part of the bulkhead project, start that rappel again along Canal, that area, which is, you know, problematic for all the parking lots in the area right in that direction. Starfish lane, we, we did that a few years ago. Now we're moving the valve over towards the roadway, trying to implement that new system. See the words, I do believe it is working better than in the past, the, the standard correction of the past of how.
I think Marina East is as well, just what I've seen, I'm not there all the time, but I do believe that there's been improvement there across from the Scotchman, based on this.
It, it is. I, I think at one point the recommendation was like a brand of valve, like a WAPRA valve. Turns out the valve technology these days, it accelerates because you have to solve this problem. So we're actually back to a tideflake now and they've improved their, their product to the point of, seems to be very, very effective.
When seeded in new infrastructure. Territorial bias, right? Just throwing it out.
Sorry. Okay. We could go over, I'm not going to list all these, we've had a lot of information coming at us this morning. But what you can kind of see here on this map is, is each of those blue dots is a stormwater project along Canal Drive. You'll notice they're pretty well distributed all the way down Canal. So we're not solving the problem fully, but we aren't ignoring it either. We're trying to put our money and once again, control the controllables and solve what we potentially can't solve or make it bad right now. Some of the more, the more recent large expenditures we incurred there, Starfish Lane with the bulkhead, the new piping, the new valve, and the, the access structure. Florida Avenue, the, the first block there from coming off of Canal Drive, that was a whole different type of process. Paving was reformation project, cost significantly more. Going into groundwater was high and subject to tidal flooding. That was a, you know, pretty big expense and that seems to work as well. Yes, it does flood, but the water does go away and the road is not falling apart and it's draining pretty well. That, that also included some wires that were sliplaned along the length of that project. As you go down through each of these, once again, I'm not going to go into each of these, but you will see there's many bulkheads. Some of these thought, these blue dots are places where we have not actually completed the project yet, and I apologize for that, we are working towards those.
PTC eight.
Yes, yes, sir. PTC eight really did not help us a whole lot. It presented a lot of problems for us that we had to solve in short order, come up with engineering for in short order to seek funding, so, anyway. Routine maintenance, some of the things we have done, we did upgrade our, our arms that are up there. We fabricated those, our staff did, and those seem to be more effective. They do look a lot better, that's for sure. And it does reduce the amount of time that's needed for those to be deployed. I think they're effective pretty well, but, you know, most people. Some of the things that we incur annually, that I don't think most people really think about is factoring and street sweeping. From a stormwater perspective, that is colossal. Everything from broom tractoring of the north end at the, the entrance to Freeman Park. You can't broom tractor that, it's saying it's on Canal, spilled all the way down Canal, goes into all the basins and that's where it becomes a stormwater issue. It's pollutants and it's flooding, so that's, we spend significant amount, close to about 100,000 annually for sweeping and factoring and things like that. So that's, that's pretty public. That's not always the case all the way through town, because we don't have to back sweep as much on other streets of town. It's just that Canal, it's all special now, it provides a lot of attention. So, and then, and our staffing as well, just our reserve staff, our on-call staff, deploying barriers, responding to flooding on Canal, is pretty significant along Canal Drive. That's just a point that we do, we do incur a pretty big cost for Canal. Brian, who does deploy those? Is that out of your staff? Is it, is it police that, who, who makes the decision, looks at the situation and then goes and puts those barriers down?
Our staff does. Our environmental staff does and they know typically that that's coming. Mike pointed out, sometimes we, we could be better at deploying those arms. But the thing is, our guys know when it's going to flood, but it's not a simple solution. If it's going to flood at five, but the wind is blowing just a little bit more, that's not projected on a tide chart, our guys are ready about an hour out, hour ahead of time, which costs to do that. But then again, it might flood two hours before and we're, we look like we didn't know it was coming. So that's kind of, we try to get better and better, but there are some uncontrollables on that.
And there's time to set up and it doesn't flood at all.
I'll start saying, I can promise, if you put those arms down and it doesn't flood, you're going to get yelled at.
Yeah, and that's the other side too. You're sitting there waiting, 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 it never happens because the wind's blowing the other direction, so. It's just, it's pretty true, but we, I do like to think we've improved, we can always improve more, so.
So I'll, I'll finish this up here with just things that we do have budgeted, that are funded to try to make this better. We do have the clamshell bulkhead budgeted, and that one has not been surveyed or engineered at this point. Scotchbonnet is ready to go, that is permitted, bid out. We are just waiting for the property owner to incorporate some improvements on their side and we'll make that happen as well. So seagull bulkhead, that is budgeted for this budget cycle too. That'll be the bulkhead and the access structure that's there and then Florida Avenue. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Brian.
And Mayor, just going to finish up, just kind of where we're going to go from here as well. As you're aware of, staff did apply for a residency grant. And what we aim to accomplish with that is more on the, the planning stages and really going through specific projects that would be identified. in that process, and having a funding strategy behind those projects. So we've applied for phase one and two together, and then once we have those projects identified, we would then go to to apply for funds for phase three and four, which would be the actual engineering design and implementation of those specific projects that are identified in the planning stages.
Yeah, this is about three months ago, I think we submitted on the twenty fifth, honor about the twenty fifth of April.
Yeah, we're hoping to, within a month, we're hoping we're going to hear something.
And then if not that one, there'll be other opportunities to apply, because no town in New Hanover County has either applied for our CCP grant applied, let alone been awarded one. So we would be potentially the first, that would be, for a north end project. Are there others that you've looked at, Jeremy, your department, other grant opportunities through DEQ or another stadium? Probably DEQ for the most part. Absent this one.
Yeah, we have, you know, what we're applying for through our stormwater design, where where's the flow of stormwater going?
Which I think is part of, I call it the PTC eight comprehensive work, right? Is that coming out of that?
Jeremy, do, I'm just testing this, I think I know this, but I'm not sure. A lot of the grants, because we hear a lot of times I get people emailing me stuff, said, here's a grant you should apply for. But my understanding is a lot of these grants will have median income component or some sort of component that we means we don't even qualify to apply for them. Is that
That is correct, yes. Some, you have to have your demographics of your community have to be a certain level for you to qualify for grants.
Yeah, one of the five conditions, some of the systemic long-term flooding or issues that haven't been resolved, but I know
Yeah, I just don't think the public sometimes realizes a lot of these, we couldn't get, we don't even apply because we wouldn't meet the demographic.
It's for at-risk communities.
Yeah, exactly. All right, anything else, Jeremy?
We're done, we're just, you know, if you have any other follow-up questions.
Anything else for Jeremy?
I do have one thing about the deployment of the gates. So every time it floods up there, I get videos of people who just decide to drive around the gate. Put the gate down, they just drive around it, and it causes wakes in people's homes. Have you ever thought about trying to look at, I know it's kind of out there, but with technology the way it is today, could we not do something like the trap, the stoplight cameras where if people run a stoplight, it automatically sends, you know, takes a picture of their tag and sends them a ticket? I know we talk about, you know, having personnel out there is not always the best scenario. But look at something like that, I mean, I don't know, I'm not that technological as far as how that would work, but it just seems like something we could look at.
We can explore it. We'll say that, you know, they do, they, people don't see it often, but they do stop people, the police do, and the police also coordinated with Brian about getting the poles down, the arms down. But a lot of times they get it, it is locals that they get a lot of time when they
It is. And that was going to be my follow-up question, what percentage of people actually live on canal?
Yeah, and you have to allow people to get, you can't, it's going to be tough to stop people from going to their home.
Well, that's, that's, it's the people who decide to drive thirty-five miles an hour to floodwater and cause a wake into people's homes.
The ticket will reveal where the license plate address is, and then all that can be interesting concept.
It's usually a warning, and one warning, and they don't do it again, but then somebody else can right behind them do it.
It's a good idea, it could be trouble for the camera to pick it up with the water everywhere.
Jeremy, I've got one question. So six years ago, I know we were going through a process of replacing all the duckbills on the north end, and we did. Like, I guess my question is, do we still use duckbills?
May defer that question to Brian Stanberry, since we had the stormwater expert here.
Yes, sir, we actually did, yeah.
So because the ones we installed, from what I understand, they didn't collect, you know, oyster shells and such, so these things is, are they still working the way they should be working?
Yeah, it's a it's a backflow valve. A duckbill is literally shaped like a duckbill, and it looks like an orange juice carton facing out. There's less usage of those now, it's more interior to the pipe, so you wouldn't see those. The valve is on the inside of the pipe.
So it's not, so it's not called a duckbill?
It can be. It's a type of backflow valve, yes, sir.
It's a backflow preventer.
Yes, sir.
And they do, and it does help to seat them in more modern with the structure pipes, what we're doing, replacing old with new, and elevating them, because a lot of the duckbill checked out, whatever it might be. If they're under head pressure from the sound more than half the day, that's going to cause some impact, it's going to shorten its lifespan and value.
Sure.
Mollusks and whatever, glands.
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks, Brian. All right, I think we're ready to move on. Item five, Bruce, is appropriate funds for revenue bond financial analysis?
Yes, sir. So we are moving forward with the projects and hoping to have them all bid by the end of the year. And along with that, we have been meeting with the financial folks that are going to help us be ready for the issuance of the bonds. So we want to go ahead and move forward that analysis, so it matches the timeline for the projects. This would be paying the money now, but we could reimburse ourselves with the issuance of the bond.
We've talked about that before.
What do you need from us?
Just
Authorizing me to enter this agreement.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so motion to authorize town manager to appropriate funds for the revenue bond financial analysis?
We're going to enter the agreement for that.
Or to enter into that agreement, okay. Any motion on the floor, any discussion?
No, because the actual rate
It is appropriate funds, I'm sorry, I apologize. It is the motion to appropriate funds.
Okay. Do you want me to remake that motion, or is it clear?
I understand. I wouldn't make it for the record.
Okay, I think we're making a motion to appropriate, I think I made a motion to appropriate funds for the town manager to appropriate funds, so that the town manager can enter into the agreement to do that financially. Does that sound good? All right, motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number six, authorization for Bike Ped Committee to draft an application for attaining a bicycle-friendly community designation. Is that, Mike?
And, yeah, that is, that is something we've been working on at the Bike Ped Committee meetings, they met last night, I wasn't there last night with the meeting, but there's a resolution in your packet that like to counsel to consider for adoption for this designation, and then Councilmember Hoffer wanted to talk about getting authorization for the Bike Ped Committee to meet, to continue to work on this designation for the community.
Awesome. I know Rodney was here, Rodney, did you have anything to add to this?
No, the resolution we would just like to have adopted, I think this would be great for our community, and we're willing to work on it, as Mike's about to say, by doing some extra meetings to help push this forward.
Awesome. Thanks, sir. Okay, so you all have the resolution in your packet, so I make a motion to approve resolutions supporting Town of Carolina Beach's desire to apply for the League of American Bicyclists to become a bicycle-friendly community. Any discussion on that motion? We all support that. Motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And Mike, were you going to add something there?
No. No, honestly, there's nothing to add, that it's what it sounds like.
Well, you're also requesting additional Bike Ped Committee meetings, so for our new procedures, I guess we need a consensus council, is everybody okay with
Yeah, and
with Mike's with Bike Ped Committee meeting to work on this?
And I guess to expand on that slightly, we've said that, okay, July is our one required meeting per year, that we had that last night, we elected our new officers. We have determined that we want to do eleven meetings a year, January through November, we're going to stick with the third Monday of the month, six PM, nothing there is going to change, but we may need a few extra meetings to work through this application.
But what you're asking council for at this moment is to meet to deal with this application?
Well, just, no, just so you understand that, yeah, that our team may have extra meetings to deal with this application.
So what are the other meetings about?
Just, we'll do this through our meet, our standard regular meetings, but we may, depending on the workload of this, call a special meeting or
That would just require notice.
Yeah, which would require notice and all that.
Okay, so is I under
So under your your policy, you should you should be approving Bike Ped to meet for this purpose. So it sounds like, and apologize, I wasn't able to be there last night, it sounds like talking to Councilmember Hopper before the meeting, they wanted to meet maybe till the end of the year, or they were going to try to do five, five or more meetings. And so if a committee wants, has a project they want to work on, they would need to present that. So Bike Ped is going to be working on this designation. If there's another item they want to work on outside this, they would need to bring that to you as well.
Okay, but today we're just approving, working on this?
Right.
Is that what we're doing? Okay, and we don't need a motion, right? Just consensus of council? Okay, so it sounds like we're all good with that? Awesome. And with that, we are down to council comments. Anybody want to go, start with Deb then?
Can I start with just one quick one? So I received a phone call from a local business who had gotten a letter of violation because she was using her lot after hours and allowing people to park there for a fee, so basically paid parking in her lot after hours. After talking to Jeremy, so in order for her to do that, it calls for her to do a conditional zoning request at a five hundred dollar fee, and by the time she got through that process, the summer would be over. So I did a little research, and we have, we have a couple of places that are already doing this and have been doing it. One of them I know has been doing it for almost a decade. What I would like to ask is maybe if council would consider allowing staff to look at a permitting process for existing businesses in the CBD who have parking lots, they only operate during daytime hours, for them to be able to use their parking lots as supplemental income with paid parking. Of course, that's going to require conditions as far as, you know.
Yeah, the parking lot ordinance conditions.
So Bruce, what do you, so I think what Deb's proposing is just that council requests you to, what would that ordinance look like? What would it be and begin work on that?
Yeah, and
Because, well, first off, is everybody, I mean, I personally, I'm a property rights guy, so I think as long as they're not going into the full-time parking lot business, right, then they should have to go through the procedures and the process of conditional zoning, just like anybody else who wanted to run a commercial parking lot. So I'm kind of supportive of, you know, if I'm, if I'm a breakfast place and I only, I'm open till two or whatever, I don't know what their hours are. So is everybody in supportive of Bruce looking into this? Okay, so there's your
It would basically be a permitting process, like an annual permitting process, just like our beach vendors have to go through, something like that.
Yeah, we'll look into what, if there's any change that needs to be made in ordinances or anything we need to do, but we'll look into it.
Right, it may require some changes to what we're currently doing, right?
Thank you, thank you. That was it.
One thing, e-bikes, I know we've brought up in the past, it has gotten out of control. I'm talking about, we're to a point right now, we've gone from fifty e-bikes on this island to a thousand e-bikes, and we need, somehow we need to manage it. I know, I know that's, it's not easy, but e-bikes right now are, it's a menace. It's a menace in some neighborhoods. They go out in gangs, they go out in groups, they do wheelies, they don't wear helmets, they go through stop signs. We need to manage this piece.
Oh, they're doing burnouts on the Rainbow Bridge?
We need to manage it until someone dies, right? When someone dies, then it becomes a subject. But some, someone is going to die if we don't manage it.
And, you know, Jake, this may not, well, I say this to Bruce, this may not be fair, but the general attitude around town is the police aren't doing anything about it. And, you know, the chief's not here to say that, and I'm not saying that's a fair statement, I'm just saying that's the way people feel.
So update, just remind everyone, there is e-bike legislation in front of the state legislature. If I recall, I got a call from the NPO, Senator Michael Lee wrote the legis, or is pushing the legislation, which means it has a really good chance of getting through. But it was, I think it got, I don't know if tabled is the proper word, but when they got into budget discussions, it didn't get there. But it still, it wasn't denied, it's still in the process, it's just they got completely sidetracked on on budgeting. So that would help the police, I can't speak to the police chief, but I believe that's what he's going to tell you, until you give him some legislation that he can enforce, it limits their abilities.
That's right.
But I'll be honest, just to reiterate, I mean, there were two kids going through my neighborhood, this, I could care less about, you know, these kids having fun, and I don't want to be the grumpy old man. But the two kids on a electric motorcycle, it was not a bicycle, neither one with a helmet, neither one with shoes. Flying through my neighborhood, and I'm going, it's a matter of time, this is a matter of time, but I don't know what to do about it.
Yeah, until that ordinance is going to be tough, but they are, they're getting these kids, but as the chief has explained to me about the juvenile ordinance, it's limited what they can do, and it is a waste of everybody's time, but they are getting parent these kids and getting their names and talking to the parents when they can catch them. Plus, it's hard to catch them because they
It is hard.
Well, it is hard to catch, let me add though, Lynn, there are laws on the books. I'm out in Greenway one day with a couple volunteers painting signs, and some kids go ripping by, and the response is, you know, there ought to be a law. And I had to explain to the folks, there are laws. Two kids on a bike, there's a law against that. Kid under fourteen or twelve without a helmet, there's a lot, like a lot of cases, there are laws. And again, I don't, I don't mean to rip on our police, I get it, it's darn near impossible to be everywhere at all times like we seem to want in this town. And, you know, again, I hate to say it, but there seems to be the general attitude around town, they're not doing anything. We did just in our new budget, approve, what, three new police officers, right?
Two on patrol.
Two sworn.
So hopefully they can put some more energy into it.
All right, Joe? Comments?
Bruce, when we spoke yesterday, it would be good for us to direct you and staff, I believe, to get some cost estimates on some of the potential solutions, be on canal and its tributaries, to neck down the tidal and stormwater flooding. We would need those costs. We would need, we would need the engineering design on whatever is selected anyway before proceeding, this would go short-term or onto a longer term, you know, tranche two, for instance, of the revenue bonds. And Brian, Captain's Quarters, you know, what's done on on Third Street, third, three hundred block of canal, maybe even a little bit further north, Captain's Quarters is going to, all things being equal, resolve some of the drainage of stormwater in that immediate area. So now you're necking down not this eighteen, you know, block canal drive, almost two miles. Now we're taking it down to something a little bit more manageable. Maybe it goes seven hundred sail pitch to the sixteen hundred block. But it doesn't seem so intimidating when going that way. But some cost estimates, please, on on some of those, if you would. What about the core, speaking of the core, beetroot nourishment, do we know when the survey ships going out?
Haven't got an update lately, I don't know if, we're working with them, there's a they're trying to do some, the way they're doing it out there, inlet, trying to do, get all the inlet from, take the sand there all the way to Curry, instead of going there offsite. So they're working through some things that right there, like some pump.
Different approach to both stretches.
They're trying to figure that portion out first, I think.
We'd love to see all the sand come out of the inlet.
That's right, because you could definitely use it and then create it for another, two more things real quick, PTC eight, Brian, are they getting after it, the contractor did, or did they get the part from Alaska? That was exotic.
They started there, one with the beach.
Okay, and they're moving south to north. And is mapping part of any of the work?
We're working on a grant to do them, we're working on a grant to do similar, we did acid inventory.
Because that's what I was asking.
This is about cleaning the system, this is assessing the system to figure out what FEMA will pay for, so that we can then clean the system. So it's a, you know, an immediate an immediate game.
There's a mapping component to it.
There is, there is, yes, but not.
That's good. And then finally, thanks, Brian. And then finally, on next Tuesday, NFMA, North End Flood Mitigation Alliance meeting, and invitations will go to our state-elected officials. And that is all.
Mike?
A couple things. So, I'm attending the Bike Walk Summit 2025. It's in September. It's in Hickory, North Carolina. And we're encouraging them to, they try to move the Bike Walk Summit from the east to the center of the city, to the west, and then back again. So, I just want to warn you, we're asked, we're poking them about bringing it to Carolina Beach. Now, not that there's any real requirement on the town, aside from the fact that it might, it might involve some large group bike rides, we might need a police, you know, help with the crossing here. No promises, I'm not saying they're going to agree to it. We're limited in space at the Marriott, so it's going to, anyway, I just thought I'd warn you all that we're noodling around with this. Hurricane season, we are in hurricane season, folks, so I strongly recommend that our staff reach out to your counterparts at New Hanover County about damage assessment, training, protocols. Very important. I can give you a number of a guy you can talk to, Jeremy. Then the last, a little complaint rant here about Airbnbs. I get it. I don't have a problem with Airbnbs. I am surrounded by them. I have 10 units of Airbnbs right around my house. Not in our side, Lynn, you know this, but on Augusta and Fifth Street. Are they just allowed to just leave their trashcans out on the street all day long, 24 hours a day? Is that still the rule? I thought you had to put trashcans back up.
I think we require them, to put them up, yeah.
Okay, I have put C-click fixes in over and over and over again. It doesn't seem to be going anywhere. I mean, I'm seeing piles of trash. Look, I've, I've told people, like, I am not, I don't advocate for getting rid of Airbnbs. I know we don't have the authority to do it. But what we do have the authority to do is nuisance abatement. If people are making too much noise, we have authority on that. If people are parking up and down the road, we have authority on that. If people are leaving their trashcans scattered all over the street, we have authority on that. And I'm just, please, look into this, and if someone puts in a C-click fix complaint, you know, help out. You know, the adjacent Airbnb to me, I put their trashcans up and back for them every week, just because I'm a nice guy. They're.
Well, that's debatable, but.
The nice guy part. They're nice people, and they're not, they're not, look, there's two types of people who are running this sort. There's the families who want to have a beach house, and renting it out helps them afford to have a beach house. That's my next-door neighbors. And then there's the people who are, it's a business. And I think that's by and large the other Airbnbs around me. They're businesses. I don't get the vibe that there are people who really necessarily care about our town as much as they care about making money in our town. But please, pretty please, look into this.
That's what they hire property management firms for, is to do these kinds of things. And it's the same on my street, Mike. Half the houses on my street are now Airbnbs, and their trashcans are out of the street all week long.
It can be a real problematic on Canal.
But if the trashcans are out, if the trashcans are out, there's a citation, you know, to the owner. The owner may not know what's going on, have somebody in California.
Bruce didn't like my answer on this one, was just pick the dang trashcan up if it's still out there the next day and charge them $50 back. But then his answer was, they'll just throw the trash on the side.
Yeah. Does Waste Management offer a concierge service where, for an extra fee, they'll put your trashcans back up for you? I thought some communities do that.
Some communities do, where they, you have, you have backdoor service. It's an extra fee.
But not available.
It's got to be a community-wide, I think.
It's not available to us?
I don't think it's in the, I mean.
Lynn, I've got one more. First of all, I do want to give a shout out to the Sunday Day Flooding Project. This pamphlet that you guys put together, it's so thorough, it's so good. So, thank you for that. I mean, it's amazing.
Yeah, it's good. Good stuff.
Jeremy, can you send your presentation to us digitally, please?
I just wanted to address the hurricane thing. I forgot to announce that Thursday, July 31st, we're going to have our emergency operation open house. We're going to do an exercise all day. At 4:00, we'll have an open house for the community to come in to talk about how we handle storms and any questions about hurricanes and everything.
Seven thirty, seven thirty-one at 4:00?
Yeah. And if you've never done that, it is amazing. I mean, that's all I can say. I'm not going to talk about, you just, the amount of preparation is unbelievable.
We'll have the station set up and show what, how.
4:00 PM on 7:31.
And Bruce, well, just to finish up, my comment was, I guess I'm in the no good deed goes unpunished category on this one. So, in my weekly report last week, I asked people, like, you know, how's it going on the beach? How, you know, starting to get a few complaints. How can we improve as the beach is getting more, the beach strand I'm talking about is getting more and more crowded? And boy, did I hear about all the problems on the beach. So, I mean, they range from vehicular traffic to unattended umbrellas, to can't get to the beach from umbrellas, blocking the lifeguards. I mean, there's a whole list of things that came out. So, I've mentioned that, but just for the, to you, but just for the rest of council, I'm asking Bruce to just look at those beach strand rules for next year. Obviously, can't do anything right in the middle of the season, but, and I'm not advocating for any particular rule change. I just, I didn't realize there was so much pent-up frustration out there on the beach to ask that question. So, I'm glad people responded. I didn't mean to sound like I was complaining. I'm really glad they responded. I just didn't know. I was looking for simple proactive things, but I got real problems. So, if you can just look at that this fall and bring something back.
Holes, too. Unfilled holes.
Yeah, the hole, the hole thing doesn't seem to be working as good as, the Turtle Patrol complained, that they still see that quite a bit. So, anyway, I don't have any answers, just, but I think we should, we should probably look at it every year. But things are changing, crowds are heavier, there's more people here, so we probably need to look at those. All right, that's all I got. With that, this meeting is adjourned.